I was there.
You're on.
I'm on.
Oh!
I'll call this council workshop for June 16, 2008 to order at 7:02.
July 16.
July 16. Did I say June? I thought I did, but I said it. July 16, 2008. Thank you for that correction. Just one housekeeping thing that's been brought to my attention a couple of times now, and I just feel that I have to possibly say something. A couple of people called me and suggested that when we talk to each other, that we refer to each other as councilors like Councilor Bergeron, Councilor Brad, as opposed to Mike or Steve or Jim. And when we address the administrator, should be probably Ploski or the town administrator as opposed to Ed. So I said I would bring it up. And so I guess going forward, if people feel comfortable with that, I think we probably should do that. Because you're all here, you all earned the title as councilors and, you know, in the capacity and your constituents that have voted for you. So with that being said, let's move on to town council to consider acceptance of minutes. That's where I got the June, Council of Branch. June 25, 2008, special meeting.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Oh, my God. Look at the lights. It was on for us. Councilor Ploski.
Starts off from the first page. Chairman Glennon noted the town council, then it goes into the site walk.
Oh.
Back to the non-public. And then the next paragraph is a repeat of the previous paragraph.
Yes, it's two.
We have to delete that first one. On page number three, towards the bottom, project coordinator Julie Glover. Next to the last line, it says construction most likely, whatever, should be would not begin or will not begin. Page three, it says W-I-L-L-D, not begin. Towards the end of the line, should be would or will. And that's everything I have on that.
Anything else on that one, Mr. Councilor Ploski?
Nope, nothing.
Okay. Next one is vice chair.
That was mine. The title was mine.
Well, it's a tie between Council of Branch and Mr. Bergeron. So we'll let Mr. Branch go, senior member. Okay.
Page three, under Councilor Quox, where it says, "When Russell Cervajee raises this building," I believe the spelling should be R-A-Z-E-S, or I don't even know if there's such a thing as a plural for that.
R-A-Z.
R-E-C.
R-A-Z, yeah.
R-A-Z-E-S, right?
Yep.
Okay. So we've got that. And then on page four, three-quarters of the way down, public works director Rick Malaski noted that the lines along Bay Road would be replaced up to the Jensen's and the Nolan's. I think it should be stated that it's going to be replaced with a larger pipe. That should be included in there, because I think Rick mentioned something about maybe going to an eight-inch or whatever it was.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. So you're adding an eight-inch pipe to that?
Is that on Ampry Street? How big is the pipe that you're going to put in there?
Forty-eight.
Oh, forty-eight. Oh, I see. Forty-eight. So I think, you know, we should just specify that as being a larger pipe, not just replacing what's there. That's all I've got.
Councilor Bergeron?
There were two meetings that day, and my issue is with the second one, so the shorter site walk one.
Is it the same thing as June 25?
It was June 25, the site walk meeting.
Prior to the meeting.
Well, let's do this one, then we'll get.
Yeah, I was on the impression that was what you were doing.
Anybody else have questions? I see no other lines. The only question I have, did I actually call this meeting to order at 8:41? That was the site walk? But I thought we did the site walk earlier, so it took that long.
We went into the meeting.
There was the non.
I see no other lights on. For corrections, roll call.
Councilor Quox. Councilor Bergeron.
Aye.
Councilor Branch.
Aye.
Councilor Ploski.
Aye.
Councilman Nuttelli.
Aye.
Councilor Carr.
Aye.
Chairman Glennon.
Aye.
Okay, so I don't see here the June 25, other site walk favor.
They were in the minute, in the mailbox.
Did we just present it today?
Very last piece of paper you have in that pile.
Very last piece. Okay. Very good. So I have a motion to accept the minutes of the special meeting site walk, June 25, that was at 6:00 p.m. Mr. Bergeron, Councilor Bergeron?
Was in attendance, and I'm not on the attendance listing, so that would be my problem with that.
Include his name.
Need to include my name.
To add your name? Okay.
To both sections, right?
That's correct.
Okay, for both, for the Rivermore and the Transformer.
That must be why there's a blank space underneath Julie Glover. That was supposed to be.
It was there, because she had to move the names around to get it all on one page so we could save paper.
Okay. Any other corrections? And we need to add them on the bottom, too, right?
Mm-hmm.
No other comments? All right. Do I have a motion? I mean, we have a motion, but roll call. What?
No, we didn't do a motion.
I thought you. Oh, I'm sorry. I liked your answer.
Motion to approve.
Okay. All right.
Second.
Now I see no discussion. Now roll call.
Councilor Quox.
Aye.
Councilor Bergeron.
Aye.
Councilor Branch.
Aye.
Councilor Ploski.
Aye.
Councilman Nuttelli.
Aye.
Councilor Carr.
Abstain.
Chairman Glennon.
Aye.
Okay, I need a motion to accept the minutes of July 2, 2008, this meeting.
Second.
And is there any discussion? Vice Chair Carr.
First page, three-quarters of the way down. It says, "He did not promise to be brief, blah, blah, blah." And to my attention, he felt he should set the record straight, should be to his attention. It says, "Record straight by speaking to the council." One, two, three, four, five lines from the bottom, where it says "my," it should be "his," I believe.
Okay.
And... I think there's a word missing on page... Or under the Rich Alpern.
Okay, these pages are not numbered either.
They're not numbered.
Yeah.
I think it's on four. Rich Alpern, he's talking about Wentworth Cheswell.
Yep.
There should be an "on" before that.
Third line, what line down?
The fourth line. One, two, three, five.
Four, five, okay.
And it should be a what? What's the correction, Judy?
He believed, let's see, he believed he had all the information he could have on Wentworth Cheswell.
Oh, okay.
There's no "on" there. And then on the next page, Jerry O'Connell at the very bottom. There's an extra "that explained" in there. Explain that explained. I think that's all I have to say.
Any other corrections? I have one. It's on, let's see, page one. I'm going by the pages here, folks, I was like, one, two, three, fourth page. Down at the bottom where it says Chairman Glennon. He added that Fairport would not receive their first monthly installment until the poles are down. I believe that's the last installment. Can you find it? No? It's like this, see this? One, two, three, fourth page.
It would be like page eight.
Yeah, it'd be like page eight. Nope, it would be four. Yep. Right. Yeah, it should be last. Okay. Let me see. Okay, that's all I have. Any other questions? I see none. Roll call.
Motion.
We did a motion.
You did?
I did.
Okay. I didn't write anything down. Councilor Quox.
Aye.
Councilor Bergeron.
Aye.
Councilor Branch.
Aye.
Councilor Ploski.
Aye.
Councilman Nuttelli.
Aye.
Councilor Carr.
Aye.
Chairman Glennon.
Aye.
Okay, the Main Street project update, Julie Glover, project coordinator. We've got to give some discussion this evening on the One Prescott Street, or what council wants to do so we can give the project coordinator the... Go ahead and proceed.
As Chairman Glennon just explained, obviously, we were all at the walk-through a number of weeks ago. So at this time, I would ask that the council, I guess, engage in some further discussion if necessary, and then take a vote as to the direction that you want us to go in regarding the three-phase transformer that is currently scheduled to be located at One Prescott Street.
Just to refresh the council's memory, we were down there, we were talking about move it to the side, leave it to the front, move it somewhere. Also, there was a huge, reasonably, I don't know how huge it is, but reasonably cost factor sitting there. There were some things that were going to be done that could help, you know, shade it and hide it and all of this other stuff. And that's where we were, and we decided to come back. And I don't see anybody here on One Prescott Street, so... Councilor Branch?
Having gone through the site walk and understanding that at one point there was actually a house there, to me, this three-phase junction box, whatever you want to call it, is going to be less intrusive on the abutting properties. However, I would, and I made the statement that evening, I believe, and I think I may have made it here also, I would like to see if we could just move it back a little bit, you know, so it's not right on that corner. And then definitely fill it in with green space. No chance that this is going to be a parking area that's going to put any asphalt down there. I'd like to see it as green space. That would be my recommendation.
Any other comments? Councilor Ploski? Beat you by one second.
I agree with Councilor Branch that it definitely should be green space. And as well as the whole area being green space, I would like to see a green-type buffer around the transformer so as to hide it, as to enhance the green space that is put in there. I know it's an odd-shaped lot, but moving it back somewhat, I agree with, but try to get it symmetrical to the lot so it doesn't look, make the lot look even more upsided.
You all set?
Yep.
Thank you. Councilor Quox?
If you remember the layout of that lot, the reason it was placed there is because that area comes to a point, and there's really, you can't utilize it for much else. So other than moving it over maybe a foot or two to get it out of the way those cars come around there, because that would really interfere with a nice square piece of green space on the other side of that. But if you move it back just enough to make sure that the cars, there'd be a safety feature and enough space so you can put an adequate green buffer around it, not just a stockade fence. And I agree with Mike and Mike.
Counselor.
Councilor Ploski and Councilor Branch, sorry. As much green space there as possible.
Okay, before, you all set?
Yes.
Before I allow, before I allow you, Robert's rules of order. Anybody else have a comment they want to make before we go back to a second? Counselor.
I have one other question. Is that area going to be curbed in as well?
I don't believe that the plan's call for it to be curbed in, but we can certainly look into putting curb in. Are you assuming you mean granite curb?
Yes.
We can certainly look into what the cost would be to add some granite curb down there. And if everyone was amenable to using used granite curving, we have certainly a fairly big stockpile of that, so...
I think that, I think doing curbing in there as well as moving it slightly back would also enhance the safety aspect of cars definitely being delineated where they're out is. And I don't know, I guess, Mr. Malaski, would that be a snowplowing issue having curbing there?
It'll be an issue for drainage. We'll have to be some work done for drainage if you curb it, close it off, because the water's.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to do. Thank you.
The only caveat, if you are going to make a motion and then take a vote on this, is that we, whatever we do has to be consistent with PSNH regulations regarding screenings around transformers.
Okay. I don't think that would be a problem. Anybody see that as a problem? Councilor Quox?
And what, do you know what if they usually recommend for screening product?
I think that they prefer green, greenery rather than fence because of airflow issues, but I was actually speaking more specifically of the distances that you're required to put things around it.
So should you probably find out those, PSNH's requirements, before you decide how far you're going to move so you have enough space within One Prescott proper to put the greens around? We don't want to put the transformers such that now there's no space to put the greens around.
Yeah, we'll have to take, we'll have to lay it out on the plot plan.
According to the requirements.
And compare it to the PSNH requirements.
Counselor Ploski?
I'd like to make a motion that we... Let's see. Location of the three-phase transformer stays at One Prescott Street. Following stipulations, the entire area of One Prescott Street remains a green space. That within PSNH regulations, green, meaning live plants, are planted around that to hide it.
Buffer.
As a buffer. Anything else? I think that's it.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion on that?
One could.
Councilor Quox?
Rick had mentioned if we put granite curbing, we'd have to do drainage. Should we do drainage there before Severino leaves, or would that be fine to do after the fact?
I'm.
Going to create more time and work.
I'm going to guess that we could do it after the fact.
Okay.
Counselor Parifat?
I'm assuming, Councilor Ploski, that you mean by green, evergreen?
Line.
So in the winter, it's also covered?
Yes, thank you. I will accept that as a friendly amendment.
Any other concerns? Any other add-ons, subtractions? Ms. Glover, can you live with that?
Oh, it's entirely at the council's desires.
No, I didn't mean it that way. I meant like, do you see any issues, problems that might pop up the way it's been worded and what's been said?
No.
Okay, great. Roll call, please.
Councilor Quox.
Aye.
Councilor Bergeron.
Aye.
Councilor Branch.
Aye.
Councilor Ploski.
Aye.
Councilman Nuttelli.
Aye.
Councilor Carr.
Aye.
Chairman Glennon.
Aye.
Great, thank you, folks. And update on Fishing Game.
Fishing Game. Rick Malaski and I met with a couple of representatives from Fishing Game yesterday to review a couple of issues relevant to the boat ramp project. We met up at the Spring Street lot. They wanted to take a look at it. As you may recall, the one sort of question that remains in the lease is how many spaces Fishing Game is looking for as overflow trailer parking. And they would like to have 15 spaces in the Spring Street lot.
How did that go from two to 15?
I don't know that it was ever two.
I thought we had so many down on Water Street.
We have four down on Water Street, and the number in the Spring Street lot was never named. We never named it, and they never named it. So they came yesterday, we met with them, and they are asking for 15 additional trailer spaces.
Do we have it up there to do that?
You know, we'd have to go out there and lay out something to determine if we did, based upon the agreement that we also have for the development of mills and stuff, to see how we can work something in there.
Are we close, is this what's holding up the signing of the lease?
Unless the council has objections or issues with any of the other provisions.
Okay, but I got some question is, how close are we to signing the lease? Is that still a ways off because we haven't delineated?
No, we could, if the council voted tonight to move forward with the lease, for example, with the 15 spaces, then we could move forward and execute the lease with Fishing Game.
Mr. Wannosie just said, we don't know.
Right.
What we have up there.
But you asked how close we are.
Yeah.
And what the issues are. This is an issue. I don't know whether the council has any other issues with the lease after reviewing the attorney's comments. I didn't have any issues relevant to the lease after reviewing the attorney's comments, but the council may.
Counselor Ploski?
Is anyone aware of recent history of what the boat trailer, or what the usage is down there of the boat ramp for loading and unloading boats? And obviously, that would influence the number of parking spaces that we might come to.
I'm not aware that anyone has, for example, sat down there for a couple of months in the summer and tried to determine how many people use it. Obviously, the use is limited and will continue to be limited because it's tidal. But Fishing Game has a formula that they use. I don't know what the formula is, but that they have a formula that ties the number of spaces that they require to the investment that they're putting into the boat ramp.
Okay.
So again, their initial request is for 15 spaces. I'm sure that they would settle for less spaces. How much less, I don't know. I suspect that they would not agree to less than 10 spaces in the Spring Street lot.
Okay. Councilor Branch?
The Water Street lot itself, if I'm not mistaken, we have tentatively identified 19 spaces going into that lot.
Correct. Four of which would remain boat trailer.
Could we increase that? I mean, what was the initial intent of those spaces down there?
For the town, what was the initial intent?
Yes, yes.
As you may recall, when the construction on Main Street is completed, we will end up, I believe it's with 10 less total on-street parking spaces. In order to mitigate that for the downtown businesses and the people who go downtown, we are looking to expand the Water Street lot. So I think the desire was perhaps not to allocate all of the spaces down there for the boat ramp because it's going to be used for downtown parking.
Is there a way to compromise, though, and say, because you're talking, they're look, I assume they're looking for 15 at Spring Street plus the fourth.
Correct.
So they're looking for 19 total spaces.
That's what they're asking for.
Can we perhaps come up with, you know, say, six and six? Two more down at Water Street and...
Oh, I'm sure of me.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking for a compromise here so that we don't have to tie up the Spring Street lot, because obviously, that's an option for the downtown businesses also for parking. And, you know, not eliminating all the spaces that we had planned on down there. Now, assuming that you're probably taking for every boat and vehicle, trailer and vehicle, you're probably taking two parking spaces is what I would guess would be a comparison.
Width-wise, do you mean?
Length.
Length.
Lengthwise.
Yeah, and I guess that would be the other thing. We'd want to lay out the lot and just see what fits, both, I guess, Water Street and Spring Street. As an aside, or maybe not so much an aside, I mean, certainly, a decision does not need to be made tonight by any means. Fishing Game told us that this project for them is moving pretty quickly. In other words, their boat ramp similar projects, but they are not even certain that construction would be next year. So while it would be great to execute the lease, because they're only going to go so far into this without the lease, it's not do or die tonight, I guess is what I want to...
So the construction is not going to be this year at all anyway?
Correct.
And I was under the impression it was going to be.
No.
You're not?
No.
Wasn't always sure, because it took us so long to get any kind of actual numbers from them. Because I think I had asked that the last time when we were talking about that lot, you know, what is, what's Fishing Game going to require? But understanding that it's further down the road, I mean, maybe we can, the administrator can sit down and figure out what we've actually got for spaces at the Spring Street lot that's usable for this application, and then come back and possibly work this, you know, come back at the business meeting or the next workshop or whatever.
Now, as, again, some of you may recall, I forget, what was it, a year or two ago, we actually had a parking study done, Walker Parking. And as part of that, we asked them to look at the Spring Street lot, and they actually provided us with a layout, which is not to say it's the only layout that one could use, but we can certainly use that as a basis to go off of in terms of looking at the spaces for trailers.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Quox?
What about the parking space across from the town hall down?
Railroad Street.
Oh, Railroad Street.
Is that the same walking distance? Why can't we utilize that? I don't know that anyone ever parks there.
Further, I think. Might be a little further.
I would, yeah, it's probably about equidistant. I haven't walked that one, but...
Take a look at that.
We can look at it, sure.
Because I know that in order to get more down on the Water Street, it's just, they have to be right when you pull in. They won't be able to back out. They don't have the length, they'll be boxed in.
Yeah, because they're, because of that wall, it's somewhat limiting.
You all set?
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Parifat?
Counselor Branch actually covered the ground I was going to ask you about, but essentially, how big is a boat trailer parking spot?
Forty-foot stalls.
So it's 40 feet by six or eight?
Fifty-nine.
Thank you.
You all set? Counselor, I'm going to skip you for a moment and go to Council Vice Chair, because you've already had one, so.
I was just going to reiterate, I think we need to look at what is available now in the three lots, if we can look at this one over here, and lay it out and see what's possible.
Yeah.
Because we can't come up with a number if we don't know what's feasible.
And again, this really was just, I wasn't expecting an answer tonight, because this was the first time, as Council of Branch pointed out, the first time they've given us a number in the two years that I think I've been working with Fishing Game on this.
Counselor Ploski?
Actually, Counselor Quox had asked the question I was going to ask, what about the Railroad Street lot?
Okay. All right. What I'm going to do, councilors, is put this on the agenda for the August workshop. Okay? Okay. Anything else, Ms. Glover?
Not on the Fishing Game boat ramp, no.
Okay. You have, let's see, please.
As some of you may have noticed, we've got a lot of activity at both ends of, both ends and the middle of Main Street these days. There's a lot, there's a lot going on. Although it was not one-way traffic all day today over the bridge, they are going to be continuing with that work of the water main and the conduits from where they've left off at the Eagles or at the top of the Mill Access Road, or under the bridge, I should say, under the bridge, over the river, and then through the woods to Bay Road. I'm sorry.
You said what I was going to say.
And while that work is going on, it will be one-way, which does tend to back traffic up a little bit. We've also had to close off Route 152 right after South Street so that they could do the work between the Pocket Park and the Flora Ventures Building. And we're trying to get truck traffic, I believe, to, if they're heading north, to go up Packers Falls because they really, large trucks can't navigate the island at the bottom of Jerry Ave. So, if you've seen a lot of changes in the traffic patterns, that's, that's what it's all about. You may have also noticed that we now have more sidewalk. They've started the sidewalk and the new, we'll call it wall cap, kind of at both ends. And that work is expected to continue this week and into next week, so that we probably won't be looking at switching over the traffic to the west side of Main Street until the last week of July is the current schedule. But overall, we're in, we're in good shape. They managed to get much quickly than we had originally thought, what we refer to as T-52, which is a large telephone vault in the ground right next to Pocket Park. I don't know, some of you may have seen it. I think it was yesterday it was sitting halfway up on the curb, and those are now already under the ground.
In the ground already?
They're in the ground already. They hit a little bit of ledge, but nothing that they couldn't pound, so they're in the ground already. So, that's great because we had anticipated at one time that that was going to be quite a bear to get those in. So, that work is all proceeding. So, actually, the work is proceeding quite swimmingly.
Are we on schedule?
We are. We are in the macro sense. We have micro schedules and we have macro schedules. The micro schedule had called for switching the traffic over this week, and because of the sidewalk and the changes and all of the things that we had discussed before, that slowed that down a bit, but they certainly haven't asked for an extension of the end date, which is what I mean by the macro schedule.
Okay. Counselor Polowski?
I deliberately came home, 150, to, took it all the way up to Jerry Avenue tonight. I did notice one sign that could be a little confusing for delivery trucks going to the downtown area. The downtown businesses sign still points straight ahead rather than down Jerry and then off. If we could get another downtown businesses sign.
For the trucks specifically, you mean?
Well, those, those should be the only trucks that would be going down there and that way to go to downtown. I just found it, it could be a little confusing because at the, this end of Jerry Ave, the sign still says downtown businesses straight ahead and there's no real indication. And if you get a rookie truck driver who is not familiar with the town, he's going to end out in Stratum or Exeter.
Okay, we'll take a look at it.
Thank you. Good job so far, by the way.
Thank you.
Counselor Quox?
I noticed there was a stop sign put at, where I was complaining about the two stop signs on Packers. What was that, Elm Street or?
Elm Street.
Elm Street.
Elm Street.
You put a?
We did. We made that a, yes, we made that a three-way stop.
Yeah.
And I've gone through it a number of times since we've done that. No, not gone through it, I've gone through that intersection.
Oh, okay.
But stopped.
But stopped.
It's much safer.
I stopped even when there wasn't a stop sign, so.
Yeah.
And I stop at the other end, too, so.
Everybody does, yeah.
So, it seems to be working well. People seem to be happy that we made it a three-way stop. I haven't heard any complaints that we made it the three-way stop.
Great. Any other comments? Okay, I have one. Julian, referring to your July 8th, Tuesday morning meeting at DPW, I'm sure you don't have the minister. I was confused when I read, I guess, other things you had done, or somebody had done. It says PS&amp;H will pull 200 amp meters, but.
But not 100?
PS&amp;H will only pull 200 amp meters, but most of the meters at 100 amps. What does that really mean? They're not going to do the 100, just 200?
It means that they typically would not, but that Regan Electric could perform that work. So, that is actually, all of those are items that we're working with Regan and PS&amp;H on resolving who's going to do what.
Okay.
But we really don't see it as an issue or impediment.
Somebody or one of them will do it.
Somebody will do it.
I wasn't sure about that. And do you have any information on the, the walkway of the RML location, the northern part? Did you receive an engineering cost estimate yet?
I haven't received the cost estimate, although we do have the recommended design from the structural engineer. And they're just essentially recommending that we put a concrete footing and a concrete wall tied into the existing old granite wall under the bridge in order to support the sidewalk.
Was it like, somebody, one of the counselors that mentioned, from the actual stepping onto that platform, you go so many feet out, maybe, might have been Director Miloski, that said at some point, walking on, then you would put a column on the need to support. Is that still part of the plan?
It's. That's, I mean, I have an engineer drawing. That's, it's not really a column, but that's, I mean, it could be considered a column, but that's essentially what we're doing.
And so, right now, we're just waiting for a cost estimate and then we're going to?
We're going to move forward so we can complete the sidewalk.
Please keep the council informed about that cost.
Yeah, I had asked to have it for tonight's meeting, but I, believe it or not, don't always get what I ask for.
You tried.
I frequently don't get what I ask for.
Okay. I don't see any other questions?
Just two other small pieces of good news, I suppose, small but good news. We finally heard word back from the DES on their willingness to cost share in our change order four, which was the drainage change order. It was about $46,000, and they've agreed to cost share with that for about $2,500. So, we'll have $2,500 coming to us from DES for that change order.
And how much was the cost originally?
The total change order is $46,000.
And they're going to pick up $2,500?
$2,500.
That's nice.
Yeah, it's better than a poke in the eye, I suppose.
I was hoping you were going to say $25,000.
No, I originally read their letter to be $12,000. I was all excited, but Phil McDonald pointed out, no, 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 it's 20% of the $12,000, so it's $2,500. We also, I think, are going to see a savings from Severino in the amount of as much as $18,000 because we got the state to agree to let us leave the existing water main under the Lamprey River Bridge, as well as making some modifications under there. So, that's going to be a cost savings of about, I think, $18,000.
Oh, that's good.
So, that's good.
And then we have one final thing I think we need to give you authorization to do this evening is to have a check cut for $64,000 to Fairpoint, just sending with that work order?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. That actually was on my list. It was on my list.
I read your notes. So, I would ask the council, these monies have been put aside, they're part of the project. I would, you know, look for a motion that we authorize the administrative work in with Julie Glover to provide a check with a work order request form, so Fairpoint can start their process.
So, moved.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counsel Quox?
Aye.
Counsel Bergeron?
Aye.
Counsel Branch?
Aye.
Counsel Polowski?
Aye.
Counsel Minutelli?
Aye.
Counsel Carr?
Aye.
Chairman Glennon?
Aye. That's the quickest $65,000 you ever got, right?
That's right. Just a couple more quick things, if I might. I've started working with Underwood Engineers on the drainage study, and the first thing that they're going to do is put together a presentation for town, town officials, federal and state officials, giving them a history of the flooding and what's gone on here to, they call it a kickoff meeting. We certainly want to get the permitting and funding agencies on board at the start of this study, because as you may recall, one of the things that Underwood said they would do for us was try to find money.
Right.
To do whatever work we might need to do as a result of the, of the study. So, that, that project is actually moving forward.
Can I have a question on that?
Sure.
You have a tentative time date or something that Underwood Engineers wants to do this?
Actually, I don't, but I can, I can get that for you.
Okay. Just so we can put on calendars and make those public notices.
Also, some of you may be aware that in conjunction with the Old Home Weekend, the We Dig New Market group is going to be doing a downtown walking tour and ice cream social. And they've asked that I participate in that, and that's going to be on Saturday, August 9th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. They're going to have a couple of stations. One is going to be in the Spring Street lot. One is going to be at the Arbor Park. One is going to be down in the waterfront. One is going to be at the Mills, and they're going to have different people stationed there to answer questions about various aspects of the project, the mill redevelopment, and just what's going on downtown. And they're going to be serving ice cream down in the waterfront.
Who's heading this up?
The We Dig New Market group, which is the group comprised of the New Market Business Association.
NCDC.
NCDC, LACCA.
Main Street.
Main Street Corporation.
Okay. Are they going to be looking at having their own representative, like, say, talk about the River Walk project?
Yes.
Or do they want committee people to show?
No, they're all, they've got it all set, as far as I know.
Correct.
I know I'm going to be there talking about the downtown project, so. I actually don't know who they have.
So, you could actually touch on the River Walk if there's a question on that.
Yeah.
What about the historical aspect of the Heritage Advisory Commission Board on the buildings?
If, if somebody wants to do that, that's welcome. The, the Ice Cream Social is going to take place down at the Shanda Park, and it's from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. that evening. It's after the Lobster Fest that, I guess, takes place up at the Recreation Center. So, it's, it's an opportunity for people to come down to the village, into the downtown, see what progress has been made, and, you know, learn a little bit more about what's, what's transpiring and things like that with different projects. And in addition, enjoying ice cream.
And we can get this on Channel 13, they advertise it and get all that?
Yep, we'll be doing that.
Are they going to be doing flyers?
They're, they're in part of the, this is, you know, the Old Home Weekend puts out a brochure and they're.
Oh, okay.
On it. They're on the agenda, so.
Great, great. And Counselor Quox?
I guess Camp Chameleon is going to be serving the ice cream.
Correct.
Down, down there. There's a little project for the kids down there, and they're going to be asking just for a small donation for.
Actually, we haven't decided that yet.
Okay.
It's still in the, still in the process.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
You didn't bring in the ice cream tonight?
No, I didn't. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see here. All right. I am flip-flopping around here only because my packet is out of sync. So, item number three, council update on employees' W2s. We took care of that on the non-public. Item number four, public hearing ordinance number 2008 slash oh nine dash oh one, Leo Landrock Field Rules. And I believe once we read this tonight and if we pass it and it becomes effective today. Let me just check something here. Okay, this is our legal notice, which I'm glad, thank you for putting that in. I think that's important. The New Market Town Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July 16, 2008, at 7:00 p.m. at the New Market Town Hall, 186 Main Street, New Market, New Hampshire to provide information and hearing, and hear, should be hearing, public comments regarding the following ordinance, ordinance number 2008 slash oh nine dash oh one, Leo Landrock Field Rules. Those persons who are unable to attend the hearing, to attend the public hearing on November 1, 2006 are urged to provide their comments providing them later than Monday, July 14, 2008. What does that mean?
What is that, November's?
Very interesting statement. I don't know. I just, we got two different ears of different things that are going on.
Yeah, I mean, I don't remember that. Counsel Branch, how's your memory? Does it ring a bell either? Okay. All right. Let's move on. I will read the ordinance, Tyler, New Market, New Hampshire, by the New Market Town Council Ordinance 2008 slash oh nine dash oh one, Leo Landrock Fields, Field Rules. Whereas the town of New Market and New Market School District has invested significant funds in the development and ongoing maintenance of the Leo Landrock Field for sports and recreation activities, and whereas the town continues to expand funds to further upgrade not just the grounds, but more recently, new backstops, dugout, soft mess fencing, scoreboard, and upgraded utility buildings, and whereas it is imperative that the town take action to preserve these resources by protecting it from individuals who have and may cause damage to town property. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the town council does hereby adopt the following ordinance. A, the Leo Landrock Field shall be closed to all individuals when there are no scheduled events at dusk. Town-sponsored events will be exempt from this curfew time. B, should there be a scheduled event at the Leo Landrock Field and park amenities, all participants shall vacate the property within one hour, within one half hour of the conclusion of such activities. The New Market Police Department shall monitor the fields and have the power to make an arrest of any individual who violates the above regulation. This ordinance shall take effect upon this passage. It was introduced reading date July 2nd of 2008. There was a public hearing this evening, July 16 to 8, and final action by council, July 16, 2008. Okay. Counsel Quox? I'm sorry, I think, no, go ahead.
Sure someone else was in first?
Nope, go ahead.
Motion to accept Biden's 2008 oh nine oh one, Leo Landrock Field Rules?
Second.
Is that what you were going to do? Okay. Second, okay. And discussion, Counselor Polowski?
Did you actually open a public hearing on that and then close it?
I supposed to do that first, wasn't I? Was I supposed to do that first?
Yeah.
It'd be nice to do that one, though. All right. I've already read it. I'm not reading again, but we can do the public comments. I'll open it up now. And I see nobody in the public other than, you have a comment? Okay. Then I will close, I will open the public comment at 8, at 7?
49.
49.
49, and close it at 7:49, seeing no public comments. Thank you for bringing that to my attention.
You're welcome.
Counsel Quox?
Do we have signage ready for that so that, so any, nobody can, can claim ignorance that they don't know about it?
We will be putting that up.
And informing the chief. That'd be great. I ran it to Jim Hilton today in the hall, and he said they're cutting holes, circles.
Lot of damage.
He's beside himself.
I guess, if I may, to Chairman, you know, the purpose of this, it wasn't an intent to, to do this. The, the reason being is that we have sustained a lot of damage, especially to some new soft mess, mesh fencing that we purchased in order to delineate the outfield during the baseball games. And we've now gotten to the point that we have individuals who have cut not just a small square out of the mesh fence, but a huge section of it. We've also experienced that the poles that hold it up, individuals have found that if they kick it just right, they're able to snap the poles. The town spent about $2,500 in order to, to purchase this so that we can, you know, make the fields look good. And if you, if anybody saw them up during the ballgames and everything, they really enhance, you know.
It's a safety thing, too.
The field itself, so. We're also seeing that, you know, people are out there damaging the back of the scoreboard by throwing things in it, and we, and we also have individuals who are, as it's called, tagging, painting various designs and names, whatever, on the skateboard park. I can let people know in town that we're moving forward with putting up some cameras in the area, so the area will be monitored visually from the dispatch center, and the police will be monitoring it quite often, and we intend to enforce the rules as they're being adopted.
Great.
With that being said, the only other thing that I may have wanted to have add to this would be a fine, a costly fine. After they're being monitored by the cameras and you can pick it and find out who it is, I think that would be a big deterrent, deterrent, whatever that word is. I don't know, can we do that?
Well, within, within the police powers, they'll be able to, when they go to court, you know, deal with that as a, as an offense and ask the court to provide some kind of restitution.
Pay for restitution, okay, great. Any further discussion on this? Okay, roll call, please.
Counsel Quox?
Aye.
Counsel Bergeron?
Aye.
Counsel Branch?
Aye.
Counsel Polowski?
Aye.
Counsel Minutelli?
Aye.
Counsel Carr?
Aye.
Chairman Glennon?
Aye.
Okay. We're moving on to Resolution 2008 slash oh nine oh one. Is that, should be oh one or oh two? We just did oh one, Leo Landrock.
It should be oh two if it's not. So, this, the. One was an ordinance, don't forget. We just adopted an ordinance, this is a resolution.
Yep, thank you, okay. Yep, thank you, okay. Now, this doesn't need a public hearing, so.
No.
Okay, this is a Resolution 2008 slash 09 dash 01, withdrawal of $15,000 from Cemetery Capital Reserve Fund for straightening and restoration of gravestones, gravestones and monuments in Old Town Cemetery. And Vice Chair Carr, would you like to read this one? See, it's all my tongue is flapping in my mouth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Town of New Market, New Hampshire, by the Town Council, Resolution 2008 slash 09 dash 01, withdrawal of $15,000 from the Cemetery Capital Reserve Fund to straighten and restore gravestones and monuments in the Old Town Cemetery. Whereas the Cemetery Capital Reserve Fund currently has a balance of $15,000, and whereas the town of New Market has begun the restoration of the town's oldest cemetery located on Terrace Drive, and whereas the cemetery trustees removed trees along the stone wall and within the cemetery as some had been hit by lightning and others had the potential to damage gravestone and monuments if they were to fall during a storm or high wind, and whereas cemetery trustees are currently engaged in restoring the original stone wall that surrounds the cemetery, and whereas the next project is aimed at straightening, repairing, and cleaning the gravestones and monuments within the cemetery. Now therefore be it resolved, the town council does hereby approve the withdrawal of $15,000 from the Cemetery Capital Reserve Fund for the purpose of straightening, cleaning, and resetting of the gravestones and monuments within the cemetery. Given at the New Market Town Council Chambers, New Market, New Hampshire, 16th day of July, 2008.
Mine says the second day.
Yeah, mine says the second.
Yeah, that one's the correct one.
You said what?
This one that slipped in here. I've got the wrong date on Mars.
Oh, okay.
Actually, I stand corrected, the date should be the second because that's when the council approved it, we just needed to adopt the resolution and the resolution was.
We did not approve it.
We did not approve it.
We didn't approve it.
It was on the agenda, but we did not approve it.
Right, because member, Mr. Alprin? Was having an issue with that, and we sent it back to have it corrected.
Stand corrected.
All right, so this, for those who have the 2nd of July is the wrong one. You haven't had the right copy. And verbiage is different from hers to mine, too. So we can, we can still, no.
Read what I have.
No, no, yours was right, we just had the wrong one, that's all. So. Counsel Polowski?
Actually, I have an aside to mention on this, seeing this does mention the, the stone wall work. The Community Service Day at Great Hill Cemetery has been changed to Saturday, August 2nd at 9:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. due to conflicting schedules.
August 7th, you said?
2nd.
2nd.
2.
August 2 from 9:00 a.m. till 2:00 p.m. And that's work on restoration of the wall.
Okay, and Counselor, Vice Chair Carr?
I just wondered, since we tabled it the last time for tonight's meeting, I wondered what the objection was.
The objection was twofold. A, the amount of money that was in the Capital Reserve Fund was actually $15,000, and there was a request to include that, it is cleaning and resetting as opposed to restoring.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor LeBranche?
Yeah, would you like a motion on this?
Sure.
Because I don't think we've got one yet, right? Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2008 slash 09 dash 01, withdrawal of $15,000 from the Cemetery Capital Reserve Fund to strengthen, straighten and restore gravestones and monuments in the Old Town Cemetery.
Okay, you have a second on that?
Second.
We did the discussion, but if there's more discussion?
I'm just going to get you down.
Counsel Polowski?
Administrator Wannowski just said that part of the problem with the June 2nd, or July 2nd one was that it should be straightened and reset. And here on this one at the top, it says straighten and restore. Should that also be straightened and reset?
What is yours?
The title of.
The title.
The same as.
Straighten and restore.
Straight.
We left the title as it was.
Okay, should it be changed to reset?
No, I think, still doing the same thing.
Restore is resetting, is restore, okay, that's accepted.
I think that's just a minor thing.
Exactly.
Counsel Quox?
No, that was.
Oh, that was it?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion, who seconded it?
I did.
June.
Okay, we have no further discussion? Oh, I guess I do want to say something. This $15,000 is only partial of what they really need of the total amount to do all of the gravestones. Is that correct? Next year they'll put in another, in the CIP, and they'll come back and have some more work done, because I thought it was a lot more costly to do the restoration of the gravestones, but they were going to start doing it little by little.
I can address that.
Okay, I don't think it's Counsel LeBranche.
I'm just questioning, I don't think you can do CIP money and take it out in the same year, so I think it's got to be a budget item, right? A line item?
Not necessarily.
No, I think you can take it out the same year that is voted on, but there's a process.
This is money that has already been set aside in the current capital reserve.
Right.
And there's an additional $10,000 that will be going in at the end of this current fiscal cycle.
So this is the capital reserve as opposed to capital improvement fund, correct? There's.
Technically, they're both the same thing.
Same, yeah.
In the past, that was part of the problem that we had, was that we had a capital reserve and a capital expense, and we've done away with the capital expense and everything goes into capital reserve. The money's appropriated, it can be expended this year, next year, or five years from now. It can be allowed to build up.
Okay, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Real call?
Counsel Quox?
Aye.
Counsel Bergeron?
Aye.
Counsel LeBranche?
Aye.
Counsel Polowski?
Aye.
Counsel Minutelli?
Aye.
Counsel Carr?
Aye.
Chairman Glennon?
Aye.
Okay, the next one is a Resolution 2008 dash 09 dash 02, authorizing the town administrator on behalf of the town to file an application for and furnish information to the Department of Environmental Services for assistance from the state revolving fund with regarding to the design and construction of an additional 750,000 gallon water tank on Great Hill. Before I go any further, do I have a motion to accept that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And I don't know where it is, because.
This book here, the yellow book.
The resolution's in here?
Oh, no, sorry. It's separate, I think.
Yeah, this whole packet needs rename. Did you give us that separately?
That's it.
That's it right here?
No, water tank, right there.
The water tank, okay. So we got a motion to accept the resolution, we got a second on it? Who seconded it?
I did.
You did, okay, great, thank you. Town of New Market, New Hampshire, by the Town Council, Resolution 2008 slash 09 dash 02, design and construction of an additional 750,000 gallon water tank. Whereas the town of New Market, after thorough consideration of nature, of the nature of its water system needs, hereby determines that the undertaking of certain works generally described as the design and construction of an additional 750,000 gallon water tank is desirable and in the public interest, and to that end, it is necessary to apply for assistance from state revolving funds, DWSRF. And whereas the town of New Market has examined and duly considered the provisions of RSA 486 colon 14 and the New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules, Chapter, what does that ENV stand for?
Environmental.
Environmental, dash C, 510, which relates to the loans from drinking water state resolving, revolving funds, and deems it to be in the public interest to file a loan application and to authorize other actions in connection therewith. Now, therefore be resolved, the town council, the governing body of said applicant, the town of New Market, as follows. One, the town administrator is hereby authorized on behalf of the town of New Market to file an application for a loan to be made in accordance with the New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules, Chapter, Environment dash C, 510. Two, that if such loan is made, the town of New Market agrees to repay the loan and stipulate it in the loan agreement. Three, that the town administrator is hereby authorized to furnish such information and to take such other action as may be necessary to enable the town of New Market to qualify for the loan. Four, that the town administrator is hereby designated as the authorized representative of the town of New Market for the purpose of furnishing such information, data, and documents pertaining to the applicant for a loan as may be required, and otherwise to act as the authorized representative of the town of New Market in connection with this application. Five, that certified copies of this resolution be included as part of the application to be submitted for a loan. Six, that if such loan be made, the town of New Market agrees to make provision for assuming property and efficient operation and maintenance of the facility after completion of the construction therefore. Given at the New Market Town Council, New Market, New Hampshire, the 16th day of July, 2008. Counsel LeBranche, discussion?
Okay, we are in the discussion, right?
Yes.
Okay. Prior to doing this application, we don't have the acquisition of land at this point sewn up, do we?
Correct.
Can we do this application not having the land available? Or in town, granted to us, I guess?
Yes. The reason that we are doing this is that the state puts together a priority list of individual communities that are going to be doing various drinking water projects. And in talking with the state, the engineers have said that, and they have recommended, the state of New Hampshire has recommended, that we begin the process of filing it knowing that in the very near future we're going to do something. We still have to go through the process of bonding the project, having the public hearings, going for the community in order to do that. But what this provides is putting it on the list, they begin to set aside the funds for it, that when we're ready for it, they will move forward with granting it. And this basically gives us the opportunity for a less expensive interest rate that we would normally get. So it's sort of being proactive at this point to get it into the pipeline, so to speak, pun intended.
And finally, this applicator, no application fees or anything of that nature that the town's liable for? Because I'm just concerned about, once again, getting into a situation where we're ready to go, but we don't have the rights.
Yeah, we, you're right, we don't have, we are, we have some areas, the location of the tower, we know where it's going to go, we need to talk to the landowner about that piece of property and then do the engineering for it. Similarly, with the next resolution be adopting it, it's under the very same reason, it's to start getting into that pipeline so that when we go to the town meeting next year, that we will have all our decks in a row, so that it'll make it easier for us to move forward with the state in regards to the loan itself.
Now, perhaps with this is land acquisition, it should be non-public, but, I mean, where would you say we are in the mix of securing this land? I mean, have we started, I guess?
Yes. We've had, we've had some work done up there in order to determine the scope of what we would like to talk with the landowner with, and we need to just walk that and then begin having some discussions with them. I've made some preliminary, would you be interested? And there was an interest of having a conversation with the town regarding that.
And once again, this would be strictly appraised value, that's all the town would be?
That is correct.
Able to pay?
Yes, that's value, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Market rate value.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Wannowski?
No.
Is that what you have? Okay. Would someone like to read this one?
We haven't voted on this one yet.
Want to vote on the first one?
Oh, we already voted on the first one, did we? So why, what am I doing here? I'm jumping the gun without voting on the other one first?
Asking that question all evening, so.
Yeah, huh, I want to get out, I guess. Okay, let's vote on the 2008 slash 09, 02 before we go to the 03. Real call please.
Counsel Quox?
This is for the authorizing you?
Yeah.
Okay, because they're both the same.
Yeah, that's why I got confused, they look so much alike.
They are.
Hi.
Counsel Bergeron?
Aye.
Counsel LeBranche?
Aye.
Counsel Polowski?
Aye.
Counsel Minutelli?
Aye.
Counsel Carr?
Aye.
Chairman Glennon?
Aye.
Counsel Quox?
So now, this means that we'll have two 750,000 gallon tanks.
That is the goal, correct.
Okay.
Now. Memory serves me right, we already did a motion on this 03.
No.
No, I thought, I was just getting ready to read it, and I thought Counsel LeBranche said a motion on that. He did, okay.
I don't think so.
No, that wasn't the one, that was the one that's what. I think Counsel Quox is right, these are so much alike that I'm getting confused.
They both have the same number.
No, they don't.
No, one has a 02.
One's 03.
We just did 02, we're doing 03 now.
Okay, now, this is a little very similar, but it is different. Okay. I will need a motion for item number seven on the agenda, adopted Resolution 2008 slash 09, 03, authorizing the town administrator on behalf of the town to file an application or and furnish information to the Department of Environmental Services for assistance from the state resolving, revolving fund with guiding to the design and construction of a new water supply well, that's the difference.
So moved. Second.
Second, okay. Now, who would like to read this one?
I will.
Thank you. Because I was going to assign it.
Town of New Market, New Hampshire, by the Town Council, Resolution 2008 slash 09 dash 03, design and construction of a new water supply well. Whereas the after, whereas the after thorough consideration of the nature of its water system needs, hereby determines that the undertaking of certain works generally described as the design and construction of a new water supply well. Something wrong there. The project is desirable and in the public interest, and to that end, it is necessary to apply for assistance from the state revolving fund, DWSRF. And whereas the applicant has examined and duly considered the provisions of RSA 486 colon 14 and the New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules, Chapter, Environmental C, 510, which relate to loans from the drinking water state revolving fund, and deems it to be in the public interest to file a loan application and to authorize other actions in connection therewith. Now therefore be it resolved, the town council, the governing body of said applicant, the town of New Market, as follows. The town administrator is hereby authorized on behalf of the town of New Market to file an application for a loan to be made in accordance with New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules, Chapter, Environmental C, 510. That if such loan is made, the town of New Market agrees to repay the loan as stipulated in the loan agreement. That the town administrator is hereby authorized to furnish such information and take other such action as may be necessary to enable the town of New Market to qualify for the loan. That the town administrator is hereby designated as the authorized representative of the town of New Market for the purpose of furnishing such information, data, and documents pertaining to the applicant for a loan as may be required, and otherwise to act as the authorized representative of the town of New Market in connection with this application. That certified copies of this resolution be included as part of the application to be submitted for a loan. That if such loan be made, the town of New Market agrees to make provisions for assuming property and efficient, property and efficient operation and maintenance of the facilities after completion of the construction thereof. Given at the New Market Town Council Chambers, New Market, New Hampshire, 16th day of July, 2008.
Okay, discussion? Let's see, Counsel Polowski?
I'm all set.
Counsel Carr?
Can we rework that first?
Yeah, it needs to.
Paragraph a little?
Yeah.
Because it doesn't, it doesn't make sense the way it's written.
Anything else? You all set? Okay. Counsel Quox?[1797.48]
Should we be putting the dollar amount beneath the one of these, even the one we just approved?
No. Not at the time.
Now's not the time to do that?
Correct.
Because we really don't know what it is yet.
That's all it is.
Okay.
And to take, for the town administrator, to take the necessary actions to comply with whatever requests they have.
Okay, no further discussion? Oops, Council LaBranche?
Yeah, if we're going to rework that first sentence, can we go down and on item four, last word, change applications to application? Not plural.
Yeah, correct. No further discussion? Roll call, please.
Council Quox?
Aye.
Council Bergeron?
Aye.
Council LaBranche?
Aye.
Council Posky?
Aye.
Council Minutelli?
Aye.
Council Carr?
Aye.
Chairman Glennon?
Aye.
Okay. Now, this one, next item, Black Bear, is not intended to have, like, three hours on this, but I did want the administrator to give us some feedback as to where and what's going on with Black Bear. Some of us councilors have been here for a little while, myself, six years, and I know for the last three years, we've been trying to get information from the previous administrator, and for some unknown reason, we were not getting it. So, this is an update from the administrator. Has everybody really had a chance to read all of this? Because it's a lot of information here.
I haven't.
You haven't? And you haven't?
I read some of it.
And you, Council Palowski? I've read it, you've read it, Mr. Council Minutelli, and Council LaBranche? So, it's the majority of us that read it, so we'll proceed. Can you, based on what, based on the councilors who have read this information, are there any questions that you have for the administrator? Councilor LaBranche, thank you.
I guess my biggest question is, some of these options are the construction of a new bridge. It's my understanding, talking with various people, that that's just not going to happen, not with the Amtrak going through there, that there's no chance of putting an additional bridge across the tracks. So, I think that would leave us with just the two options where there's already access over the tracks. So, I guess, where were you coming from with the suggestions? I think there's two different locations of putting a bridge over, or an access over, I guess would be a better term. Have you talked to somebody and gotten different information on that, or?
What I attempted to do was looking at all of the data that the town presently has accumulated over research that has been done. I looked at the information and saw that there was two locations to put bridges. One was right down here, short of, just after you go slightly out of town, past Irving Station, it was looked to.
Dennis Wyner project?
Yes, thank you. To put a bridge, a turn that goes off, and then a bridge going over the railroad tracks. I don't think there, and I guess, I haven't seen anything that says you can't put a bridge over the Amtrak. When you do put a bridge, it has to be of a certain height. So, that way, you know, that determines how high and how much structure we're going to have to have going across in order to access the property on the other side. Similarly, if we are able to improve the bridge on New Road, at the Newmarket-Newfield Town Line, we're still going to have to raise that bridge in order to meet the conditions that are required for the train to go under. It's probably at the height that it should be, present time, but if it's going to be repaired in order to carry truck traffic, which it's not capable of doing, they would probably require us to raise it up slightly in order to allow the train to go under it, meeting their specifications. Similarly, when the bridge was repaired out here, it had to be raised slightly. So, that's what they take into consideration. I haven't seen anything that says you can't, and be glad to look into that further. But the gist of what I was trying to get is that, you know, Black Bear has seemed to been in a stagnant pattern, and it's been there for whatever reasons, you know, could have been that the downtown project was more important to the community as a whole, and the council felt that that was the direction they wanted to go, and not enough attention was paid to Black Bear. The town has acquired property, that makes it continue to be a feasible project, but I think what we need to do at this point is the council needs to resurrect the advisory committee and give them a charge, and say, you know, we'd like you to come back in eighteen months with a plan of action. Is this, what are all the areas that we have to look at in order to, that may become stomach blocks, such as a bridge? Can we do it? How much is that going to cost? We have some funds available from the incremental value that we have obtained on different, on the properties itself, and I think that we should be looking at it, because right now the economy is down, we all know that, but maybe we might be in a position to position the community to take advantage of an upswing where we can attract some business and develop some plans. In addition to that is, there are resources, you know, several, a few months ago, we talked about the possibility of a relocation of Route one oh eight, of doing a one oh eight corridor study, and there've been a couple of studies that showed a roadway that comes from Newfield, over the Newfield Bridge, and alongside the Black Bear Tiff, through the Black Bear Tiff, and ending over in, at the New Road, on the, what would be the north end over here by the former funeral home. That could be an option we explore. And it would only be one bridge, but it's an option that we would explore to make it a viable, you know, industrial park for the community, or a business park. So, I was just trying to sort of brainstorm it on my own as to, you know, what do we have to do, and how should we go about that? Because otherwise, you know, we received a correspondence from Town Council, because there was an inquiry as to getting rid of the Tiff, and nobody's really gotten rid of a Tiff. They've gotten rid of it, or disposed of it, when it's been completed. And we also have, you know, the issue of the town purchased property, because they had a goal of doing exonerative, recreational fields. Now, if we're going to dispose of that, we need to dispose of it in such a way that we pay the town back for that, the Tiff, and then hopefully have something left over, and now's not the time to do it. It's a large, open piece of property that can be used in some manner, so. I guess my suggestion to the council is that we look at reviving the advisory committee, and maybe even set up a committee that works with them, to start exploring, how do we develop this piece of property, and is it a viable piece of property for us to develop and move forward on? And we haven't issued the bond, that three point five million, I think it is, that is sitting there. It hasn't been, it hasn't been issued, it can be at some point in time, to do some of the infrastructure improvements that we have. We know we have a couple wells over there that have the ability to provide water, and would be potentially suitable to provide the residents in that particular Tiff district with that. We'd have to look at running some sewer lines, so all those things can be explored, and see what we have to do, and how much incremental value we'll get off of that, being able to do these projects. Just as a history, because being on the council probably the longest, the cost at the time, back in two thousand and four, for that bridge by Dennis Wyner's property, was approximately a little over a million dollars to do that, so I imagine the cost is substantially higher. The other part of that is timing is everything, with the redevelopment of the mills in the downtown, because I was an advocate of getting rid of that Black Bear. But since, the last year or so, I have some re-thoughts on it, and with the economic vitality coming, I'm hoping for the mills, there may be that opportunity to do something up there. And there's been some inquiries about the Black Bear, nothing concrete yet, but if people are thinking about that, they're thinking the same tone, I think, as some of us are thinking, that now may not be a good time, however, the timing is very near, because the economy will slip. We know that's going to happen, so, as what Pat Sherman said last night at council level, it may not sound like the right time, but economically, you know, step into the future, so to speak, the timing is perfect right now. So, and I believe you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, and it's basically what the comment that the administrator made, as far as the town purchasing some of that property up there for recreational fields. Now, I'm not sure when that purchase took place, or if that specifically was why the town purchased it, but my question is, why are we sitting here with X amount of acres that were potentially earmarked for recreation fields and doing nothing with it? It's a lot easier for me as a councilor to sell the Black Bear to the public if we've got something going on up there, but to have nothing going on up there, which is exactly what we've had for...
Ten years.
Yeah, you know, I mean, if we can see, even if we just simply leveled it off and said, okay, we've got soccer fields up here, kids, you know, recreation can go up there and play soccer, you don't have to construct ball fields and spend a whole lot of money, but have something going on up there to show that this is a viable piece of property. Maybe then you can get the people back behind it, and, you know, obviously, if you're looking at option A, option B, option C, it's going to take time, it's going to take money, it's going to take looking for grants, funding, and everything else. To me, it's a logical thing to get something going up there now, and I'm pretty confident that if you went to Mr. Hilton and said, Jim, what would you like to see up there? He'd have plans for you probably very, very quickly.
Yes, but the council needs to understand that the construction of recreation fields are only a very temporary thing, they are not something that are part of the Tiff district, so we cannot use that piece of property and develop long-term...
Slutter.
Yeah, long-term ball fields of any sort up there, because that's not what the Tiff is all about. It's, you know, the mills down here had a specific purpose, that piece of property was done for the purposes of a business park.
Economic.
Now, does that say that ball fields cannot be located within the Tiff district, you know, for the different types of businesses, you know, walking trails or something like that? No. But to construct fields up there as a goal, to be able to do that, that's against, and we have a letter, and I think I included that, from Town Council, that said, that's not, that's not allowed project for the Tiff district.
So, what you're saying is, and if I may continue...
No, go ahead.
To get my mind straight on this.
Yep.
For example, if you go up on Packers Falls Road, just over the town line, there's a piece of property that someone owns, it was a wide-open field, and they constructed a few soccer nets, and they played soccer there on the weekends. You go to Lee, and you look at the new Lee Public Safety Building, and there's just flat, I mean, there's not any real serious construction. I'm not even sure if there's any fences there, other than maybe some lines and some goals. Why can't the town of Newmarket come and do something like that, which is minimal expense? It's no different than what they're doing down at Beany Hellcroft Field, they're just going there and using a level playing ground. All we need is somebody to maintain it in terms of mowing it.
It's part of the Tiff. As long as, as long as the understanding is that that's not a long-term thing, it's just to use for fields and stuff like that.
IBM came in there tomorrow and wanted to buy the piece of property, let's sign, you know, we'll take the money and we'll put ball fields someplace else.
And that is doable. That is, that is a doable thing.
So, I guess that's my question, you know, can we at least try to get something going on up there, create a little bit of buzz around town about the fact that there's something happening up there? That's all I'm saying.
Mm-hmm.
It might get interest.
Yeah, I think we all had that, about a year or so ago. And you all set?
Yeah.
Council Quox?
It wasn't purchased, that piece wasn't purchased for rec fields, when Herb Del Rumpel wanted to get it. That was just to add to the existing Black Bear Tiff district. And in reading the minutes from February fourth oh four, when Herb Del Rumpel, who was on the council and was a Black Bear Tiff committee member, Chairman Hart asked what the percentage of land that they could have, and it said the maximum is a hundred and forty acres. Does that mean the, if I could ask the town administrator, is that the total that they're allowed? Because you've got a certain percentage that you're allowed to have within the town, and it states that they have a hundred and forty acres. Do they have to take out wetlands to that?
Well, that's the whole, that's the total amount of acreage they have there.
Ten percent.
As the projects are developed over time, yes, wetlands would be taken out, so you would, one of the paperwork that I gave you showed a sort of scenario of a layout of a business park.
Yeah.
And that removes, that's only building on the soils that will allow for construction of a facility, and the rest of it is open space, because it's wetlands, or it's just that, it's left as an open space.
All right, so they don't, wetlands don't quantify into that hundred and forty acres that they're allowed to have, as the percentage of land in the town our size, they put in the Black, in the Tiff? That's, because I thought Lionel had close to two hundred acres in there.
No, it is a percentage of the community that you can have within a Tiff district, and as parts of it come out of it, then you're able to put additional ones if you have another area that you want to develop.
And does that calculation include the Wilson farm that was placed?
Yes.
Into it, that includes that?
Yeah.
Okay. And I'm, I mean, I'm all for, I was an advocate of putting ball fields there, but I hate to see us putting ball fields there, or any type of rec field, practice field, and then we do get an entity in there that doesn't want to include it. I mean, we're kind of, that would be a sad day to have people used to doing that, and then not be able to do it after. And I, you know, I don't know how soon, I don't know how soon we're going to, it's been ten years, and we've had some good times, some good economic times while it was there, and I just, I just don't see it feasible. I would, I would like to see it disbanded, because I don't know how soon the residents of Newmarket are going to get any relief in their tax bill or anything else from this. This is a long-term thing, we're going to have to float a bond to do it, and I just, I'm not for it at all. Thank you.
I just want to preface one thing. The amount of money that's in the Tiff right now is about fifty-three thousand, right, if I read that correctly?
Correct.
So, that's not going to make a whole heck of a lot impact on the tax rate, however, it is something you could add. And the other question I have, there really, really is no time limit on a Tiff, is there?
It's correct.
So, no harm, no foul. We didn't buy the property, we don't own the property, it's there, so if we want to develop it, we can negotiate with the landowners, and meanwhile, it's increasing the value, but... And the other part, what you had said earlier was, you thought perhaps Black Bear wasn't being developed because we were concentrating on the downtown? I really think the steam got lost when Celestica, we were all hoping that that was coming, and we were going to get it, it was like we were number two on the decision process of Celestica, and we didn't get it, so I think we lost some of that momentum there. And then, yes, then the downtown was being focused on, and the Black Bear was sort of sitting out there in perpetuity, and some of us were getting antsy about it, so I think that's all, you have a follow-up?
Yes, as far as the life of the Tiff, it is limited, I believe. If it's a dormant or active Tiff, and the life of the Tiff is the life of the bond, once it is issued, and the bond itself cannot be for longer than a twenty-year period, and this is according to minutes.
Correct, but the bond hasn't been issued.
Right, so, I mean, but the bond does have a lifespan.
Right, but my point was, because it hasn't been, there's no lifespan on that, so. Councilor Carr?
I'm, being a newbie here, I'm really questioning the feasibility of this, because we have had it for ten years. I grant you, I probably don't know all I should know, even though I read the packet. I don't see anything wrong with having a group dealing with it, but I hate to see any money go into, into developing it right now, because I just, you know, it's been sitting there for ten years, and people know it's there, and nobody's coming forward, and I grant you, it's a bad time right now, but I just wonder with a, an area like Peas, whether we really can draw. I think Celestica went to Peas, if I'm not mistaken.
It balled it up within six months.
And if you compare, unfortunately, Newmarket to Peas, you're talking about apples and oranges. So, I just, I just, you know, I hope that, I would love to see it develop, I would love to see it contribute more to the town, but I also don't think that, at this point, it's a terribly viable thing. That doesn't mean we necessarily should disband it, but it's, I think it's something we need to look at.
Okay, that makes sense.
My two cents.
Councilor, do you want to respond to that?
No.
Okay. Councilor Palowski?
I think the current economic downturn is probably an asset to us, as far as...
I think the current economic downturn is probably an asset to us as far as Black Bear TIF goes, because we can get a group going to see what we are going to have to do in the future to make this a viable project once again. I eat the bridge. That's all, that's obviously given, but, and what else do we need to do out there to make this a viable project, so that when the economy does swing back up, we've got somebody knocking at our door saying, hey, I want to come to Newmarket. I want to take this, and then we can float the bond, get the work done, and have the benefits of a TIF district, which was the ultimate intent on it.
It's just to bring them there.
And I think now is the time to do it, and to start investigating what we need to do and planning. Yes, it has been inactive for 10 years. And inactive, not just sitting there looking green, it's been inactive as far as activity from us planning for it. And I think with the wrapping up of the downtown TIF and the downtown reconstruction, now is the time to start getting active and planning and saying, okay, this is what we need to do, folks. I think keeping the Black Bear TIF at this point is going to be nothing more than a major asset for this town, such as the mill the downtown TIF has been. Thank you.
And just to remember, some discussion was at the previous council, I think it was Chairman Hart at the time, and we had discussion on this, that we would hope, we're not sure, but we would hope that we could retire the bond for the downtown TIF this year.
2010.
2000 what?
10.
Well, we were thinking about doing it earlier, if we could, but we don't know. So with that coming to a point of retiring it, it may not be a bad idea. And I agree with your assessment of a subcommittee, not a subcommittee, but empower the TIF, because the TIF committee, Black Bear, their mission, their goal, has always been to advise the council. And unfortunately, neither has the TIF of the downtown nor the Black Bear TIF in the past, really, you know, advise the council, and I was the first chairman of the downtown TIF, and I always felt at that point that we were just a rubber stamp. You know, the administrator came in and said, we need this, you need to approve it, get it to the council. There was no really, you know, studies and things being done, empower them to do that. And I think, I applaud you for taking that initiative to say that this Black Bear committee, if it's the same order, a new makeup of committees, empower them to go and look at feasibility, what are the, you know, what are the issues of developing it? Is it feasible? Can we do it? If so, how? If not, why? And then have them come back. But I don't know if I agree with 18 months. I think probably a year on that. So Counselor Labranche?
I guess I just want to state that, as Counselor Quarks, I too was ready to pack it up and say, you know, let's just forget this, because it's not going to work. But with the developments going on with, for example, we all know that the country club is for sale. There's a strong potential there. Obviously, that's going to be rezoned, but there's still a potential. It is your entrance to the town, I mean, that's when you first come into Newmarket. It's close enough to the outskirts, you know, to new fields, that it's not intruding on the downtown or anything like that. So, you know, I would like to see at least some kind of a timeframe, but once again, I want to see something happen down there. And I think the easiest thing that we can do is, is to give someone like Mr. Hilton an opportunity to say, you know, how much is it going to cost me to really put just a level playing field and mow it? That's it. Nothing else. And, you know, a couple of border parties or whatever is required down there. Just to show that, you know, this isn't just a vacant piece of land, it is being utilized. You, you know, you talk, there's no access to it. Well, there is and there isn't. I mean, you know, you can drive in there with a regular vehicle, you just can't take an 18-wheeler down there. And obviously, if you're looking for a sizable business to go in it, that's the kind of vehicle traffic you're going to need. So, you know, let's see if we can at least have Mr. Hilton take a look at this and give us, I'm sure he could do it, and he's probably done enough projects to give us a ballpark figure of what it would cost, and see if we can get something going on down there. And give it a timeframe of a year, and try to get the committee back up. I'm the council rep, I mean, from what I've heard, there hasn't been a meeting in well over a year.
Right.
So I know why I put you there.
Do we even have members? You know, I think it might be a good thing if the administrator could maybe talk to Kathy and say, you know, can you contact the existing members and see if they're still on board?
You have that. You've all got a copy of all the boards and all the members on each board, so that was the reason why we initiated that, was so everybody knows who's on what board and who's the chair, and their term when that expires. If you don't have that, we'll get it.
Well, no, I mean, Black Bear doesn't even have a chair at this point, I don't believe. They probably don't even have a board.
Well, it probably does, but we don't know who it would be at this point.
You know, so, you know, maybe that's, that's the starting point, is to see if we can't make connection with the people that are still on that list, see if they're still interested. If they're not, get it posted and try to get the thing. It may take us six months to get the committee up and running again, who knows?
Right.
But, you know, if, if there is a little bit of enthusiasm and activity maybe going on down there, people will say, ah, yeah, let's give it one more shot, see what happens. And I'm all for giving it one more shot, but, you know, how many times do you keep going back and saying, give it time, give it time, give it time?
Can I address two items you said?
Mm-hmm.
One, I certainly would support some type of interim soccer field, whatever it is that Mr. Hilton can do to alleviate some of that stress that they're having. Number two to that, as I had stated earlier, when I did the committee assignments, there was a purpose to why I selected certain people to certain areas. Counselor Labranche? That was one of the reasons why I selected you to go there, because you had such an interest in the Black Bear, and we, both of us agreed very much on that, saying, well, let's disband it, and let's get rid of it. But after consultation with the town administrator, I started seeing it a different way. So I would say your challenge is to talk to all those people in the Black Bear and see if you can get a meeting, which you did very effectively with the fire department, and got that committee back up and, you know, getting people to come to the meetings and everything else. So that would be your challenge, I would say, at that point, working with the administrator.
I'll do that. You get a hold of Mr. Hilton.
I will.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Polowski?
Counselor Labranche, as far as interim use of the land, I support that 100%, but I think by TIF regulations, we cannot expand town funds in that TIF district. Not TIF funds, but town funds in that TIF district, because that is now set aside for TIF. And I don't think we legally can do that. It's a great idea, and yes, we have the need for fields, even though they may be temporary, but I don't think legally we can do that according to the regulations.
Okay.
And that's something that really needs to be looked into.
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
Okay. Back along, we had the former administrator mowing that. So at this point, all it requires, if I correct, is mowing and maybe some delineation of the soccer lanes and things like that. So that would come out of Mr. Hilton's current budget, I would assume. So as far as any digging and making areas, stuff like that, I don't see that happening. It's just something to show that there's activity in that area, knowing full well, if the committee comes back, the Black Bear committee comes back and says, this is our recommendation, the council at that time decides to go ahead with it, then that comes out of TIF monies, and that ball fields may disappear. However, as, I'm not sure who said it, but if we got a developer in there, we could negotiate with the developer and say, look, we have the ball fields, what do you think? You know, and there are many companies out there, and I have one in mind, that I've heard rumors that would be an excellent tenant in there that would, I'm sure, would do that and say, we'll provide the ball fields, don't worry about it. So it's showing, we've taken the initiative, we're utilizing the property, and it's not coming really out of a budget that we didn't allocate, and it's not coming out of the TIF, it's coming out of DPW's budget for grounds and roads, where we're cutting and mowing the grass, and it'll probably come out of Mr. Hilton's for the lime and whatever else has to be used. So your point is well-taken, though, because I would be concerned about that, too. All right, we all set? Counselor Quarks?
It states in the letter from our attorney dated October 15th, '07, that we cannot use them for athletic fields. We can use them only, it's on, it's on page two. It's from Attorney Client privilege, October 15th, '07, and it states that the only thing that we can, in light of the above and in light of the requirements under RSA 162-k, semicolon, six, and RSA 162-k, which require the municipality to act in conformance with the development program, and the development programs listed above in bold, those four items. It's our opinion that the property which was acquired by TIF funds cannot be used for any other purpose, other than that expressly set forth by the development plan, which would not include the use of the property as athletic field. So we've already gotten a legal opinion on that. And he goes on to say a few other things, but we cannot use it, it's been set forth. When you develop a TIF, you have to state exactly what your plans are, and those four bulleted items are what we can do. We cannot use them for fields.
We all set?
And the original bridge cost estimate was 300, 3,500,000.
Thank you for that correction. I would ask the town administrator to check with legal to see if this document, what they're recommending, is for a long-term plan versus a short-term solution, and knowing full well that we're not going to invest any heavy dollars in there, it's just a matter of mowing. And then get that legal opinion back to us, if you would, please.
And it would, it would not be TIF funds expended?
Yeah, it would not be TIF funds expended for that purpose.
But it would be town funds.
Right. Right. So at this point, I guess, I don't know if we... Counselor Quarks?
If I could ask the town administrator that when, when he asks McNeil, Taylor, and Gallo again, I mean, we just did this in 2007, and they said we can't use it, if you could refer them to that letter, so that we don't pay any more extra money for legal fees if we don't have to, because they've already given us an opinion.
Where does the council want to go? You're going to, Counselor Labranche, you're going to work with the, what's left of the TIF, Black Bear, get that. Is the council upon advice from legal to whether we can actually use the fields on an interim basis with no funds from the TIF, if that is something we can do for short term? And I guess at this point, we're pretty much all in agreement, with the exception of probably one counselor? I haven't heard from you. Nor Counselor Minnetelli. I have not heard from either one of you. What are your thoughts on this? Or do you have any? I don't want to put you on the spot, but...
I think Counselor Quarks was right. It seems that the question's already been raised, and, I mean, we can ask again, but it seems like it was clearly, yeah, but also in the beginning.
Yeah.
See, Counselor Labranche, I'm thinking that maybe he's thinking that we're doing this on a permanent basis, we're going to put lights up there, we're going to put huge ball fields.
Well, it doesn't state whether it was permanent or...
Right, and that was, that was my question.
You could clarify that with him. So, yeah, sure, I agree with that.
I'll continue.
That's fine with you also?
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Labranche?
Yeah, I guess, I'm under the impression that perhaps some of that, that legal terminology that he used was in reference to disbanding the TIF, if we disband it, or if we continue, or whatever. So I'd like to, you know, we've got, what, three weeks before we have our next business meeting, so perhaps in that three-week period, I can get a hold of the existing members, find out where we are, give an update on that. The administrator can check with Mr. Hilton, see what he can come up with for basically zero dollars, and check with legal and see if this is something that, well, we're not going to change the lay of the land, we're not going to do any excavating, we're going to basically line it, mow it, and put some nets up, if this is something that we can legally do, and have that ready for our, our business meeting. I mean, it's something that's pretty cut and dry. Yes, yes, or no? You know, and go that route. That would be my suggestion. I don't know how anyone else feels.
I agree with that.
And bring this back to the September business meeting?
August.
August.
Can we do it?
August. Business, yeah.
That's like three weeks away, right? Yeah.
Almost five.
Not the business, business.
We have two weeks off.
Right.
We have the next two weeks off, and the 20th of August is the next meeting, business for workshops.
Right, what I was suggesting, bringing it to the business.
Okay.
If we can just have it on as a...
Is it appropriate for the business meeting? Well, probably should, so we get a quicker response on that. Yeah, okay, I agree. The other thing is, are we in agreement that we would like to see the committee, the Black Bear, so we can give Counselor Labranche direction to start up again and find the members first, and then we'll charge them with something to what to do?
Get it posted on Channel 13 and get it going.
Yeah, because if, if the administrator has the answers, and I've got a committee, I mean, we've got our charge, you know?
Yeah, right.
Let's, let's put some fields there, and let's work on, on what else we can do, and show that there's an interest up there for something.
Well, we may want to put that in some type of a resolution of what their charge and their mission is.
In relation to what we did with the fire department.
Correct.
There should be one already for them.
Well, there is one, but I think it's changed.
Reinvigorate.
Huh?
Reinvigorate.
Right, reinvigorate, and maybe we want to make some changes in there at this particular time, on a specific mission, is to come back within a specific time.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, folks. I'm going to hand my packet to you and have you put it back in order, because I have no idea how it came. Thank you.
What about books?
I have it right here. My book, I have it. Okay, so, moving on. All right, the next item is Black Bear, first reading of demolition ordinance. We did get the legal review. Did we?
Oh, yes, we did.
Okay.
It's in here?
It's in here. I was going to say, the way I looked at it, I thought maybe there was another one. Okay, now, I can't find it. Where is it? I'm getting there, folks. Just got to find it. Okay. I don't believe I have it. I thought I read it, and I know I read it.
It might be in the news.
It might be in that pile. Yeah, it's not in there. All right, let me start back here. See, this, this was put together by someone other than Kathy this time, so not everything is in the order. No, I don't have it. Thank you. This is our first reading of this.
I...
But we got a letter from...
Right.
Yeah, I'm looking for the letter. I don't have the...
The town council has provided a letter, which I think would stem, would hold a first reading at this point.
Okay, thank you.
The letter from council would actually cause to not have a first reading, because he has several questions that he's asked, and his review questions whether or not the ordinance, whether it just is for the downtown historic district, but can't be expanded beyond that boundaries, in the first instance. Secondly, he also notes that there's some confusion as to when the demolition review committee begins their process. There's, there's a timeframe that is there, and his question is, is when does that begin to run? If you're, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't really have a starting date that that 49 days goes, is a second issue that needs to be clarified. And thirdly, the Historic District Commission, where it has a membership and everything, is a body that can adopt this ordinance by holding a public hearing, and that process, as opposed to, you know, coming before the council at this point, and that, that process should be followed. So there's, there's several different issues here that need to be... So there's, there's several different issues here that need to be resolved in some way before this ordinance can go to a first reading.
Is, is that legit, though? Because we are not a quote-quote commission, we're an advisory board. That's why it's coming before the council.
Well, I, I, I think, and, and other members can chime in, it just seems that, you know, the, you have a Newmarket Advisory Heritage Commission. That's what it's called, my understanding.
Yeah.
And so therefore, and it was constituted under RSA six seventy-three colon one, and when you look at that, it was provided for by the council that established it and moved it forward at that point. And so therefore, they have, while it's advisory, which is the purpose of it, in order to do certain things, it ha, it has the ability to adopt an ordinance.
Oh, it does? Okay, I wasn't aware of that.
And that, and that's what, you know, under RSA six seventy-five colon one, you can do that. The, the committee can do that, but it has to go through the public hearing process. So it's not that we just adopt it as a, you know, it pretty much go through a, a reading and, and a, and a public hearing with comment from the public as to whether or not they want to have that. But I think that as you read the, the, the letter here, there's several distinct areas that, that council talks about that needs to be in some way figured out and, and properly drafted or, or, you know, changed in some way.
So would we, would it be your recommendation, and certainly would be mine, but would it be your recommendation we send this back to the Heritage Advisory Commission?
We don't have a commission yet.
Heritage Advisory Commission is what we're called versus the Heritage, Heritage Commission? We're an advisory board to the council at this point, that's our status. And then you go into what we're hoping in October is to come before the council to become a full-fledged commission with all the duties and responsibilities of the state RSAs, of which we don't currently have. Councillor LaBranche?
Understanding that we just got this legal opinion on the fourteenth, obviously, the author of the ordinance, is that what it's called, an ordinance? Yes, the author of the ordinance probably has not had a chance to make any necessary corrections. Is it premature to, to make a motion to move this to, you know, I don't, would we do it on a business? We'd have to do it on a workshop, right? Or could we do it on a...
I think it should go to a workshop.
Yeah.
Go to the, go to the August workshop?
Right. But I'm wondering if we should just send it to the Heritage Advisory Commission?
Well, it should definitely be...
Because he's saying that they can do this.
They, they should have the legal, whoever authored this, and I, and I'm not sure who did, but whoever authored this should, should have the legal opinion and try to address the questions that FX had and, and correct it on the ordinance, then bring it back to us so that it's probably a lot more accurate and, and better understood. That would be my suggestion.
Okay. Councillor Clarks?
Could we possibly do it before, could we do it in two weeks at the business meeting?
I, I don't have a problem. I mean, I think you'd make, somebody said...
Because it's, it's, I mean, I've been trying to, to get a planning board, hasn't been able to get this accomplished. They've been doing a lot, and I've been asking for this for quite a couple of years now. And I'd hate to see it languish and, and just, and we do have a meeting next Thursday with the advisory, so I can go over this, bring this to their attention, maybe we can get some amendments to the existing, because I spoke to the code enforcement officer in Conker today, and they do use this through the whole town. They don't use it just for the historic district, they use it for the entire town.
I, I will amend my motion to say the business meeting if, if it's available and if the rest of the council agrees with it.
Well, that's the other question. I'm gonna have to go back and look and see what's on the agenda for the business meeting and then make that determination at that point. If we can do it, fine, if not, it will have to go to the workshop.
I mean, I'm willing to compromise, you know, I, I obviously would like to see it get done if, if it is gonna get done.
Let's do it right, and we're in that right direction, so...
But, and, you know, as you're aware, it's, the talk is, the clock is ticking, and I'd hate to see a, an important building in town go down.
The motion as, as at the next available meeting?
Yes, that would be fine.
I don't think we have a second yet.
I'll second it.
Okay. Now councillor Walowski, you have a, what's that word we, it was second and everything? Discussion, that's what I'm trying to say.
It's getting late. Where the Advisory Heritage Commission has the option of doing a public hearing and passing the ordinance, might it be more timely if we do pass this back on to the Advisory Heritage Commission for them to move on? And we have a lot of stuff on our plate this year.
And I think that's where she...
And I think, I agree that this should go back to the Advisory Heritage Commission, where they do have the authority to hold a public hearing and to pass that ordinance.
And their schedule may be better than what our schedule is.
We really don't have the authority to do that. We're an advisory committee. I think a, a town administrator meant to put it back to the planning board.
No.
No?
No, I'm, I'm, and my suggestion is, and I'd be more than happy, because as I read the attorney's letter, what I did is I went back and I, every time he cited an RSA, I pulled that and went back and reviewed that, and it helped to clarify for me the authority that the advisory committee has to be able to take action versus, you know, coming to the council as an ordinance at this point in time. And, and again, you know, there's, you know, the biggest part is on, is on the second page, the second paragraph, first full paragraph where he talks about, actually, the third paragraph, where he talks about the timeframes in there. That needs to be clarified, needs to be worked so it's very consistent, so that they, you know, does the clock tick the day that Edwinowski walks in and hands in a, a permit to demolish a building? Or does it start when, you know, the five-day notice? You know, you have to clarify what that is all about, because it's very tenuous, it's just like it's, it's open-ended, and somebody could challenge and say, well, wait a minute, now you're on the fiftieth day and I can, I'm gonna start the wrecking ball. So I think that it, I think it's a great idea to have the committee as a whole, look at this, this, this correspondence and talk about it and see how they want to proceed at that point. That would be the most, that would be the best way to go.
That, that would make sense.
So do you want me to rescind my motion?
If you want, it's up to you.
I'll rescind it.
Who, who seconded it?
Councillor Clarks, I think.
Who seconded it?
I rescind my second.
Okay, so we'll move it to the Heritage Advisory Board for discussion. Thank you, folks. Now, I found this one where it was. Okay, let's go back here. Okay. Monthly update by the town clerk, tax collector. So everyone had a chance to read it, and are there any questions? And I will say she does a very thorough job. No questions on hers? Okay, moving on. Council's goals, three goals. I'm gonna start with senior member, councillor LaBranche, do you have a chance to come up with three goals?
I'd like to be... That's where I, I'm at right now. I want to really focus on one goal and one goal only, and that's to secure water rights, one way or another, either through the recharge system or through land acquisition. That's, that's the goal. I'd, I'd like to see that accomplished before the next council step, or at least have the processes in place, understanding that we're not gonna have a well and piped in, in a year's time, but at least have, you know, one of the possible options moving forward at a quick clip.
And that's continue to work with Emery Garrett and that group. Okay.
Yeah, that, they're part of the recharge, and they have a little less function with the wells than with recharge, but yes, get going in one direction, focus on one direction and see if we can get this thing done.
Okay, thank you, and I appreciate you coming in with that goal. And let's move on to councillor Walowski.
That was actually the same goal that I had, that I really wanted to see done, is the water. We have an, we have a need in this town for water and getting this accomplished. It has been a long, long process, and we need to get it either finished or close to finished, so that the next council can come and wrap it up.
Okay, thank you. And councillor Menetelli?
I made a list for you, but I don't seem to have it with me here today, but I know that, I'll just echo the sentiments of the, the other, the previous two councillors and say, and say water.
Okay. And the other ones, can you email me?
Email, sure, of course.
Great, thank you. So you do have others, right?
I had quite a list.
Councillor Carr?
I had also water on my list, but the other two I had, one was, and these are nebulous sort of, they're not nuts and bolts kind of things. I'd like to hold the line on any unmandated costs such as salary increases, which are mandated by contracts and things. I'd like to, to have a year where we look at what we have, where we try to improve the way the whole, the council functions, the town functions, try to really worry about housekeeping kind of things and make things run as smoothly and as simply as possible, because that's one thing I think, I was a little gassed when I saw the list of committees and it went through the letter R or something. That's for such a small, for such a small town, that's a lot of people involved in, you know, for eight or nine thousand people, doing various things. And not that there, there are bad things to do, but I, I guess my question is, is it, are we making it more difficult for ourselves by making it more involved? Can we simply, you know, because government tends to be bureaucratic, so I would personally like to see things simplified.
Streamline some of this.
Streamline, yep, as much as possible. It's nebulous, but...
Yeah. And your third one?
Well, basically, that, that was it, finish what we've started and simplify the town government and hold the line on the, on, on mandated costs for, for at least a year to try to get ourselves back on track. Those were the three.
Okay, thank you. And councillor Clarks?
Basically, I'd, I'd like to clarify, clean up with this demolition ordinance and finish up the junk-out ordinance, and definitely, I believe, Mike, you got a copy from Dan Vincent for the property maintenance, and I have an older version, I like to get together, and I know, Jim, that was a big concern of yours, with the, we're spending all this money in town, and you drive by these properties and they're in such disrepair, it's, I find it embarrassing. And I would like to get a real good property maintenance audit with some teeth in it, so we, we are formulating that into the ordinance that the Advisory Heritage is working on now for the historic district, but we'd like to take it that one step forward for that. And exactly what councillor Carr said, I would like to be an advocate for tax relief for residents through the budget process, and we have to bite the bullet, pay for the extra oil, the extra gas, and of course, that reflects what we have for, for roadways because it's a petroleum-based product, but that is it. I mean, people in town, there's a lot of elderly, I'm sure they're all wondering how the heck they're gonna pay their oil bill this year, and I'll tell you, I'm wondering myself. And to, to put an extra burden of one cent more on their tax base for next year is not a nice thing to do, and I'm gonna do my best to make sure that we don't have any increase in taxes, if possible. And I think everybody, every department, that should be their goal as well.
Thank you. That was two or three there?
Four.
I got the demolition for...
Demolition, yeah, property, property maintenance ordinance and the, and of course, the historic district and all that stuff there. Want me to continue?
No. And councillor Bertrault?
Well, Chairman Glennon, I'm, I'm still working on my goals. Being new, I'm still kind of clarifying my position here. You know, I, I see pieces and parts of what everybody else's goals I would like to be as, well, I'm not trying to...
You're on vacation, I understand.
I just got back from vacation, but...
Get back to my side.
A little bit of jet lag, yeah, okay. So you'd like to have an extension to come back?
I would, to be fair. I, I do agree with councillor Carr, there are, you know, there are a number of committees that, you know, there's a lot of directions that we get pulled in, and would like to see some simplification as well. But I would like to do better and give you some more clear goals.
Thank you. All right, so we'll look at that at, how much time you think you'll probably need? Twenty minutes?
Next meeting.
He needs a note from his mother, can't he?
Okay, so we'll, we'll get yours at the business, well, business meeting, yeah, okay. We could do that. Okay, now...
What do you have?
I have quite a few, and you guys have hit some of them right on. Water is definitely one. Absolutely, we, we gotta figure that out. Number two would have been Black Bear, and we're working on that. That's part of the reason why it's on the agenda tonight, as other reasons where people in the past wanted it. So one of the big things I'm really advocating, I've been working on this for two years, and I just recently had a conversation with both the finance director and the town administrator, is I would like, and I'm really serious about this, we've all talked about here about trying to save money for the town, not to increase costs. We have an opportunity here, I believe, in our purchasing process, I would like to see an example would be, take the purchasing of general supplies. Two years ago, as a councillor, I went through the budget process, I added up one line item across the board in every single department, and I came up with a hundred and ten thousand dollars being used on that line item as general supplies. So I went to the new finance director prior to Mr. Walowski coming in and said, gee, Mr. Pennell, given the fact that we know a hundred and ten thousand dollars, what do you think our savings would be if we were to go out and purchase this in a bulk format, say, get with a school and get in a consortium and, you know, work it through? And the estimate at that point was about, he figured about, I was conservative, I was saying ten to fifteen, he was saying more like twenty. And just the other day, I had a conversation with our new superintendent, and he's estimating approximately thirty-five percent. That's a huge saving. So what I like, Mr. Walowski, which he said he was gonna do, and they're working on it, is to come up with a process to where we would buy supplies, it may entail adding a small room next to where the videotaping is being done, a small room like that, to put the supplies in and do a requisition process and have that. So that's one of my goals for this year, that I really would like to see done, because that's a lot of money. The council is approached by the administration at some point and says, you know, we gotta add another staff somewhere, somehow, whatever the reasons are, we don't know, I'm not saying they are, but if that were to come, or we need money for something else. My thought is gonna be, tell me where you're gonna save money. How are you gonna do it? How are you gonna pay for it without impacting the taxpayer? So that was that one, and I have one other one that I've spoken to Mr. Walowski about, and some of the staff about, and some of the councillors about, and some people in the public. I was hoping that we could do this as a joint venture of the council in sometime in October, beginning of November, to bring all of these departments, all of these committees together, such as what you were saying, councillor Carr, there were so many committees out there. Take a day, I think you, Mr. Walowski, when I said probably four hours, you were thinking more like it would be a day to do this thing, maybe two days to do this, and bring everybody together in the auditorium, and there's an individual in Exeter who's done a demographic of the entire state of New Hampshire, it was on PBS TV, and he's in Exeter, he's even shown pictures of Newmarket, what every town is going through, the, the problems they're having, you're, you're not alone, some of the solutions, some of the ideas, use that as a focal point, and then have each committee, each department head, look at what their goals are for the next, say, twelve months or whatever, and ask them, how do you plan on achieving it? What are the things that the council can do to help you to achieve those goals? What are the long-term, what are the short-term? So we're all kind of speaking the same language. And that would include things like the Heritage Advisory... And that would include things like the Heritage Advisory, the Riverwalk Committee, the War Memorial people, because everybody's trying to do something, and really, not everybody's in touch to what other people are trying to do. So that's one of my goals that I would like to do. If we can't do it, say, in November, then I would look at early spring. And try to have this probably done maybe every year and a half, maybe two years. So everybody's focused and going in the same direction. Because I'm hearing from staff, and I'm hearing from other people, that there's no cohesiveness. A lot of people don't seem to know what other people are doing. So that's probably the reason why I also want to have the minutes available to the public to come in, pick up, and look at these minutes on a regular basis and have them ready. So, and a flat budget is the other thing I had. So I had like five. So, Mr. Bergeron, if you don't have any, you can take some of mine.
Thank you.
So now, the next task of this, now that we all have talked about it, I guess I would like some, I don't want to make it sound long and complicated, but now that you've come with your goals, to give some ideas how we can achieve some of these goals. And you can feel free to pick on other people's goals that they have, because if yours is like water, we're heading in that direction. We've taken initiative, we're taking steps in that direction. So if somebody has something specific, like say, the budget, where you might want to save some dollars and be specific about it, you know, you're our council rep to the Budget Committee, you would take that to them, you know, and let them know this is what the council's feelings are. And I would say that's not too early to do that, because the budget process is coming, how soon, September?
Well, the department heads are going to start their budget process next month.
Right.
They're starting CIP this month.
Right. So if we take some initiative and look at those things and start planning ahead, because in the five or six years I've been on the council, it's always, we're looking at something that's, you know, immediate. We're dealing with it now. I kind of want to be a little more focused towards the future and bring these things forth, you know, and have some discussion about it. So with that, I'm going to keep quiet and go to Counselor Quox.
And is Counselor Plasky still the representative to the school board?
No.
Who's this?
Counselor Bergeron.
If you could please bring a message of fiscal.
I will.
Of trying to hold everything down, because the school budget is a large piece of it, you know, they have certain things, insurance and stuff, but, and, you know, I kind of feel they went to the town three times to ask for school and they said no. So I think if, was it twice, three times? I lost count.
I think it's three, actually.
Three times. And I think if the school shows some, some good judgment and puts some good faith and holds their costs down substantially, like the town will, I hope, I think that'll give the residents of the town a little faith and, and, you know, who knows next time when the vote comes up, if they show some real fiscal responsibility, we all have to.
Got to work together.
Yes.
And that's the goal.
Definitely.
Any other, Counselor Lebrun?
Just in reference to the school board rep, and I know Counselor Plasky was the rep for two years.
Yes.
And now Counselor Bergeron. And I guess this kind of goes with Vice Chair Carr's sentiments on a goal. I'm watching a school board meeting and I'm seeing a councilor sit there for two or three hours and not have a vote, not have a say, really. I mean, all he is, in essence, there for is to give a report of what the council is doing. Just as a recommendation, I'd like to see where maybe Counselor Bergeron would be on their agenda, go up, speak at this podium, and give what the council is looking for. And then perhaps we get a rep from the school board to come and do the exact same thing once a month for us. 10, 15 minutes, they talk to us, give us a spiel, bang. Because that's a long meeting. You know, I mean, Counselor Carr's been on the, on the planning board, I've been on the planning board, those are long meetings, you know. And at least there you have a vote.
Right. Yeah.
You know, and, and Counselor Bergeron and Counselor Plasky, they have, they can, they can add things to the school thing, but it's like, you know, there's no vote there for them.
Let me give you a little history on that. When I was the council rep to the school board, I was sitting in the audience, I was not even sitting up here. And I had to tooth and nail to get that to happen. And it didn't happen while I was on the term, however, it happened the following year. In the same breath, I was trying to fight to get a voting, you know, right on that school board. And I was basically told at that point, it is a separation of town and two separate forms of government, and that was the issue then. But we've got a new administration in there, we've got new board members in there. If they can look through their charter and there's no violation of their charter and the separation of the two forms of government, then I certainly would support that, absolutely. The other point I want to make, I'm not so sure where is advantageous to have the Counselor Bergeron to be the council rep to the school board and to have a school board rep coming to the council, because I think that's redundant, because you're going to report on the same things that they're going to report on. See what I'm saying? We had before Mr. Hawkins coming to us, because he was really talking about the school and the expansion, the building and all of that. That's basically what he was talking about.
Right, but if Counselor Bergeron doesn't have to sit through the whole school board meeting, he's only going to know what he, what the council has instructed him to bring to the school board. Whereas, you know, and then he's, he's done, he goes home, it's just like.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Okay, I'm not saying that he sits there or anything, I'm just saying that he brings a report, you know, like, like the, it was mentioned to bring to the school board to, you know, keep the budget, work on the budget.
Right.
Being a flat budget. Okay, so, so that would be what he'd probably bring to the next, next meeting that he attends. And then, you know, at our business meeting or at our workshop, whatever you prefer, someone from the school board come in and say, well, the school board has talked about, you know, this particular item that we need help from the council on, or whatever, you know, charge the individual, give, give the councilor, give the school board rep, you know, a charge to go to the other board and relay this. So that the lines of communication is still open, but you don't have to sit there for three hours.
And that falls into what I was saying earlier, that I want the council, to these various committees, to go and get that information and bring it back to the council, and when the council has a discussion, bring it back to those committees. So there is that open line of communication, you're not just sitting there all night long. So are you suggesting, if I got this right, you're suggesting that Counselor Bergeron would go and just give his report from the council? But if he does that.
Or ask questions.
Or if he does that, though, then he's not going to be there long enough to have a vote on anything.
He doesn't have.
Doesn't so anyway.
Okay, no, but I thought your original thought was you'd like to see them be able to have.
Well, if he's going to have a vote, then certainly, you know, I'm, I'm all in favor of a councilor being on a board, provided he has, he or she has a vote. But if they don't have a vote, it's kind of like, let's just go get the information.
Okay, and I agree, I agree. I absolutely agree with that. I just wasn't sure whether you were saying, you know, two things here, that they should be able to leave after they give their report, but more importantly, you wanted them to have a vote on any of the issues they're discussing. If that's going to happen, then he has to be there for that whole duration.
Basically, I think what I was saying was, since he doesn't have a vote, why stay? And that's, that's basically it.
Okay, and your mission is to see if you can get a vote? If that's what you wanted.
Well, I guess that's one of my goals.
Yes. Counselor Plasky?
While we're talking about the school board, remembering my first meeting of the school board, I followed Counselor Glennon as council rep to the school board. I come in and I sort of bullied my way up to the seats up here. And the week after, there was a seat for me specifically, they had to make one the first meeting. I would prefer to go the avenue of working towards getting a vote on the school board, which, one of my goals when I ran for council was to get all of the committees and the school side to be more of a team. And one of the things I saw, which is why I asked for school board, was the big divide between the school side and the town side. And I think now with the new superintendent, with Mr. Wanoski as town administrator, I can see that coming closer to fruition. And I, I agree wholeheartedly, after sitting two years of meetings on the school board, that they can be long and you're sitting there almost uninvolved, other than throwing your two cents worth in occasionally. But I think it's really important to be there and hopefully, working with the school board chair and the new superintendent, are possibly getting a vote. Because this is our town, it's not the school's town, it's not the administration's town. It's our town. And I think working together and having a vote on that board would be very, very good. Onto financial responsibility. I think one of the things I would like to see done for immediate financial responsibility is to possibly get together with the Budget Committee, as a council, Budget Committee, and possibly the School Committee, and sit down, go through the budgets, looking for areas we can save money in the current budget. And then going back to respective department heads and saying, you know, the council, Budget Committee, School Board said, this is possibility where we can save money. And pushing the town, the department head, to be a little more frugal in that area, or say, I can't do it because. And a little more incentive to get money saved in these tight times. And I would like to see a joint meeting of at least the Budget Committee and the Town Council.
I can respond to that. Counsel, Mr. Wanoski and I, we have, you'll be seeing it very soon, a map that will be in his office. It's a nine-month map? I can't remember. And we're looking, we've fallen a place to put it, and I will be penciling in such joint meetings with the planning board, with the school board, with the Budget Committee, although your question, your concern on the Budget Committee, that will probably be more in line when the budget is really in process. I mean, I don't see any reason why we can't have a meeting prior to the budget process, but those are some of the things that would be marked on the calendar. So you folks, when you go in, take a look at that and see what's coming up on the agenda and, you know, what month it will be on.
Well, this was more in line of, things have changed dramatically since we went over with the fine-tooth comb this year's budget. Things have changed dramatically.
Well, this year's budget, yeah.
This year's budget. And I'd like to take another relook at this year's budget, and I know we can't make any changes, but we can make suggestions.
Oh, use it as a guide going forward.
As a guide going forward. Not only going forward into the next year's budget, but guides to say, where can we save money this year? And then throwing it out to a department head, saying, you know, there was discussion on, you know, maybe this might be an area you'd save money, you could save money in. And our department head may or may not agree with you, and, but it would give them some extra ideas.
Okay, so the council agreement that you might want to set that, have me set that up with the Budget Committee for that conversation?
Communication is good.
I'm only seeing one head shaking.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay. You'll, Counselor Lebrun, you'll be involved with that, too?
Right, I'll, I'll bring, I mean, the Budget Committee, I believe, is meeting August 11th, I think, is their next meeting. So I will definitely bring that up to them, but I guess I disagree with you a little bit as far as, I think we should, I think the council should speak with the Budget Committee prior to the budget being handed to them.
Well, that's why I changed that, I said, we wouldn't do any harm.
Because, you know, we really, I know last year was a little bit of a struggle, because I would come in and I would speak with the administrator and the chair, and I'd say, you know, the Budget Committee's looking to do this, looking to do that. And, you know, it was, it was some tense moments every now and again, trying to get my point across of where the Budget Committee was coming from as the rep, and giving, getting it across to, to the administrator, and also getting it across to the Budget Committee where we were coming from. But, you know, in regard to the joint meetings and stuff, the nice thing, and the school board meetings, the nice thing is, today we have television, you know, which I'm sure when the council reps were assigned to some of these boards, we didn't have it.
I don't think we did, yeah.
So, you know, we, we have the opportunity, the, the school board has the opportunity to view what we're talking about right now, and before Counselor Bergeron even brings it to their attention, they know what he's going to ask. So that's the nice thing about it. You know, if you don't see it, that's your own fault, that's the way I look at it. I try to catch as many meetings as I can on replay or whatever. But, you know, it's important to realize that we do have that outlet also. But, you know, just, I will definitely bring it to the Budget Committee. And if I recall, last year was middle of September when we started to get geared up primarily with the school budget first, then the municipal budget followed. So if you're going to get them, you're going to want to probably try to get them early.
Okay, what I'd like you to do, you're already going to do it. If you can give me a date, I'll pencil it in to when it's convenient. And if we have to do a separate meeting, which I think we've done in the past, it's a separate meeting, we can do that and get that on the calendar. So those type of things. And also, Counselor Bergeron, if you could do the same on your end. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't probably schedule the school board within the same month, I probably would probably look out towards October or something like that, for timelines. Thank you, folks, for that. And we have a Christmas tree of lights here. All right, who's on first, who's on second? Counselor Bergeron, you're up. You have your goals already?
Actually, no. But, well, I have one now, it's been signed to me. Actually, it's, this is going way back, because I've been on the board for a while here, but I didn't have a chance to talk to Counselor Plasky on his feelings about the school board. But I, I've only sat on one school board meeting, but I had the same feeling that it's basically like a fifth wheel. I gave a quick spiel about what was going on with the council, and then I, you know, I could give a couple, you know, comments as to what they were talking about. But other than that, my hands are tied behind my back. I prefer not to sit there for three hours just listening. If I can be involved, and I certainly, you know, have no qualms about being a part of the school board, whether they'd like me to be a part of their school board, that's another matter. I'll, I'll have to talk to the chair of the school board and see what their feeling is about making me a voting member. But I agree, if I'm not, there isn't much sense of sitting there for three hours.
And then at that point, if you cannot get that a voting, then you would suggest, I would suggest, you would suggest to them, you're going to come in, give the council report, and ask them to send a representative from their board to the council. And we'll set it on a specific date all the time, like the workshop, you know, when we do the committee meetings, and they can come in and do it then.
Yes, I agree.
Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
All right, so we can get that dialogue. If the school board members are looking here this evening, I'm hoping they're getting very clear that the council wants to work with them, because all of the monies for the taxes are coming out of the same pot, which is the taxpayer.
That's right.
That's where it's coming from. So, let's see, who's next? Counselor Quox?
One quick, I have two questions. One of them, are you legally able to vote on, is there any RSA that prohibits?
Well, that's when he's got to check, he's got to check it.
An RSA. And second, on the Budget Committee, having all these meetings, I understand the Chair, Caprioli, at the first meeting, stated that she was going to streamline the process and not even have department heads in to, maybe Mike can answer to that, and not even have department heads in this year, like we did this past year.
Yeah, he hasn't had a chance to, to be on a meeting yet.
Okay, but I, I mean, I've watched.
She did say that.
I've watched the, the, the video and all that, and that's what I understand, so I don't see, I hope that's not true. Could you clarify that?
I, I can check on that, but as I had stated previously, and I think I stated it at the end of last year's budget session, that, you know, we brought people like Rick Malaski and, and other department heads in, Chief Seer, several times to talk to the council, talk to the council again, talk to the Budget Committee, you know. And streamlining it, my interpretation would be that we're going to bring them in once. You know, like, I know in the past, we've had the two Saturdays, you know, a Saturday, a Wednesday, a Saturday, where department heads have come in, presented their budgets, we've been able to grill them, ask them questions. But it's always been, it never fails that when we do that, the school board's got their final thing going on upstairs, and that's where the Budget Committee tends to be. So by streamlining it, I, I'm hoping that what they were suggesting is that we bring the department heads in one time, one time only. That's, that's what I would hope.
So it should probably, based on what Counselor Quox is saying, there should be a feeling from the council that we would not like to see it streamlined to the point with its. department heads and managers are not brought forth.
No, that, to me, as, as, as a Budget Committee member last year, it's very valuable that you have those people there. But I think that people like Rick would come in and repeat themselves two or three times, the same spiel when, you know, they could do it one time, one time only.
That makes sense.
So it's just a question of coordinating the meetings at the right time so everyone can attend. That's, that's really it. And, and trust me, I will fight for that with the Budget Committee to make sure that they're, they are giving the department heads the opportunity to speak. And, and ask them questions as to why is it this way? You know, why do you need this money? Or are you sure you've got enough money? Or whatever the question may be. It's important that they have the opportunity to ask that question.
I believe Chiaka was, were you at that meeting?
I was. I was going to say something.
I still haven't relinquished, but I would like to hear from her.
Chairman Caprioli said that she was interested in taking the Budget Committee to each of the departments in town and doing like a walkthrough, a tour.
That's the CIP that they usually do that on?
Well, I believe that she said that at one of the, at the first Budget Meeting, meaning if I'm not mistaken.
I mean, I can get clarification on that.
And, so that was a way, I think, to counter that without, you know, getting the Budget Committee to have more information about the actual departments. But I still think you need the department heads to come in and talk, you know.
I guess if I may, the Chair of the Budget Committee and I met with, and Don Parnell was, was with me, and we had a conversation. And one of the things that I had recommended was that, like with the, the CIP Committee, many people have never been to the different departments in this community. And they don't, they haven't seen a lot of the equipment and, and the, and the buildings and, and taken a tour of them. And I suggested that during the summer months, that it might be advantageous for the, the Budget Committee to do just that. To go and see, meet with the department heads, have that conversation, being able to see that when you, you know, I'm going to be asking for a new X here, because this is the X I have at the present time. You know, you begin to appreciate maybe that need for that X. But also, we talked about at the same, at the same time, of doing just what Councilor LeBranche said. It's, you know, rather than having everybody parade through, if we can all work together and have one meeting where we're all asking the question. The goal that, that we have on the administration's side is to make the budget process a lot more understandable for the Budget Committee and for the council by putting as much information into that. So when you read that document, by the time that you finish it, I know what's in Public Works. I know what the administration's asking. I know what Planning Board and Zoning Board and all the others are doing, because I've got that flavor of what their needs are at that point in time. And I can ask a better quality question as to, you know, what they're asking for and maybe what changes can be made in it. So it's, it's a process of trying to, all of us working together at the same time, so we, we're not so redundant about things that we have to, and we're concentrating more on what we're trying to do is put together a budget that's reasonable, effective, and meets the goals of the community at the least possible cost for the taxpayers. That's what we're trying to do. That's the goal.
And the Budget Committee taking a tour of these facilities, as well as the CIP Committee, even though they're two separate committees, it's all going to be channeled and funneled through one process. So it just makes sense that as the budget process you walk through, and as you said, this piece of equipment, the person, when that group sits down on the budget side and thinks about it and talks about it, and then the CIP people come in and they start talking about, then you're going to be able to correlate that together and say, we've had that conversation. We know what that was all about, and that is the purpose. So I applaud that whole process. I think it would work. But Council LeBranche, that's your mission, so however you think you can get a working agreement with them and bring it back to the council, that would be great. And I was going to do this later, but while we're talking about it right now, I want to pass this out. Thank you to Town Administrator. This is all about budget and finance workshop. It's going to be held on September 25th, Thursday, and Tuesday, September 23rd. I, I would encourage everyone, if you have the time, please take the time, you know, if it means a vacation day, whatever, to go, because this is going to really help us during the budget process. There are monies out there. It can come from the council's contingency fund that we have. We also have a training budget, I think, that can come out of that also. So I would suggest anybody who's really interested in doing this, because I'm going to sign up for it, maybe we could call pool. It's 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Registration begins at 8:30. Continental breakfast and lunch will be provided. And I also would recommend that the Budget Committee go into this, as well as the CIP Committee goes do this also. And Councilor LeBranche?
I just want to say that, that this is a great workshop.
Have you been there?
They ran that last year, and it was well-attended by budget people. And you get a lot, get a lot of good things out of it for an eight-hour day, I think it is.
Can you take copies to the Budget Committee?
I think that, I think that Mr. Parnell is...
He's doing that. Great.
Yes, that's right. It was emailed to the Budget Committee, because I got a copy of it tonight.
Okay. So we all have a sense of direction here? This is a great dialogue. And where are we next? Because I'm missing it.
Standing Committees and Council Reps. Review of standing committees.
I just wanted to add something.
Sure.
And that is that, in regards to Council Plosky's comments. Yeah, I, I don't think it's necessary for the Budget Committee and the council to go through the budget and recommend areas for department heads to look at. We've, we've already been talking about the fact that, you know, heating, heating fuel, even though the town has a pre-buy, and gasoline costs and electric costs are big items in everybody's, doesn't matter who we are. We're looking at that. And departments, Public Works is trying to use the smallest vehicle they can when they go to their jobs, not to run the big trucks. The chief also has instructed his offices relative to, you know, we're just not going to be idling the vehicles. Go to location, park, observe traffic, and do what you have to do from there. So we're trying to do the different things to try to keep our costs down. I'm sort of toying with the idea, because a lot of communities are looking at that, of maybe going to a four-day work week for the Town Hall. So that way, we have four 10-hour days, and we're closed on Fridays. You know, that, that's going to come to the council, and that would be from our heating months, from November to probably the end of March. So that way, you know, we're, we're trying to do everything we can. We're not going to spend, we didn't last year, the last fiscal year, we're not going to do it again. We're going to be tried by, be as mindful as possible of the effects that every dollar that we spend has on the taxpayers. But, you know, the budget's set in stone. We're going to raise that amount of money, and we're going to try to do the, you know, spend it as wisely as possible. And I, you know, we're, we're always looking. We're looking at different ways to, to do our job better. So I just want to reassure you on that.
Yeah. I didn't, I didn't mean to sound like, I didn't think that you were all working hard to try to save money, because I realize you are. I just thought it might bring some, some other ideas of possible ways to save.
Brainstorming. Brainstorming. And as I say to the department heads, if you've got a better way to do it, let us know. Now, we're willing to, to consider it, and if it, if it works, we'll implement it.
Okay.
We'll give it, we'll at least give it a shot.
Which raises another issue. I'm glad you brought that up. We just recently enacted through a resolution, the Energy, I call it Energy Audit Committee, but it's an energy committee. And the purpose of that is to look at, this building, I believe, is the first building we want to look at, is cogent. What was that?
They're doing the school, I think, first. I think they're getting a bid ready for the school.
Well, the school's separate. They do their own thing.
They have their own thing.
We're talking about the town. To look at this building as a cogent-style, you know, heating system, however, before we can even do that, we've got to seriously look at, because you don't want to put a new energy technology in here when you can literally sit in some of these offices and see the shades moving in in the cold winter months. Because I know your office does that. I know the Planning Board's office does that. So we may, not may, we will have to look at replacing the windows. So that has to be put into a CIP program. That'd be something that people have to vote on. But if we're going to save dollars, we've got to start investing monies. And that's, that's my only point. So when you see, you know, we all want to keep the budget flat, but we may have to think long-term and figure out, you know, if we're going to do this cogent-style system, what is it going to take to do it? Because we don't want to put it in and just blow the heat right out the window, because it doesn't make any sense. And we'll have some data, I think we gave some data, on the Epping scenario. And on their cogent system, they are now producing electricity that's going back into the grid. But their light bill for the Town Hall was $490 a month. With this new system, recently, when I checked with Clay Mitchell, because he's the town planner there, it's about $85 a month. That's a huge savings. And those are the things we're looking for. You know, this building and other buildings. So, all right. Review of standing committees and council representatives. All right. First of all, I've only gotten minutes from the Heritage Advisory, the Conservation Commission, Lamprey Riverwalk, and the Main Street Corporation. We have a new council rep to the NCDC, so we won't have anything there. Ms. Carr, I'm going to let you speak, because you were next, I was going to say, about the Planning Board.
Okay. I called Susan Jordan to ask her about getting the minutes from the Planning Board. And she told me, and you can tell me if this is wrong, that already the councilors get the minutes of the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of adjustment.
We do, but they're not in this packet this week.
Okay, so you just, you just want them in the packet?
Yeah, yeah. She needs to get them over to Kathy so they can be in the packet.
Okay, I'll tell her that.
You had a meeting last night, so we're not expecting those minutes.
Yeah, yeah. I got you.
The minutes are the most recent, you know, meeting, the most recent meeting where minutes are available.
Okay.
And if they say draft, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, well, they will be draft, but...
I just want to get an idea what's going on. So open space, Planning Board, School Board, you are probably away.
Yes.
Are you away? Okay, so if you can get back to them and let them know that we need the copies. Let me just try to remind you, Mr. Wodowski, tell me if I'm correct on this one. Our packets are ready on a Friday. So Kathy needs to have this stuff, the administrative office needs to have it by, I'm going to guess, noon time on Wednesday, so she can correlate it, put it together for Thursday, and the packets are ready on Friday.
I would say yes.
So that's noon on Wednesday, the week before the meeting?
Even, even if they're here by noon on Thursday, because then it's easy enough, she's already putting stuff together.
Okay. So go back to your committees, and, and don't just say to them, we need it. We just got an update from Council Mimicelli on the RSA stating when minutes have to be available. There was a change in the RSA. It's still five days, but they've now taken out the Saturdays and Sundays. So it's now 120 hours? Is that what it was?
Yeah, five days. And you're taking out the weekends, right?
Taking out the weekends.
Five business days.
So it's not, it's not so much a request we're making, it is the RSA. If there's a public hearing, and particularly where there's a council rep at these meetings, we need the minutes of those meetings, and they can be draft-formed, doesn't matter. Get them to Kathy by noon time on Thursday, prior to the packets going out. I would have said Wednesday, but if you want to go with Thursday, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. So it just goes to show you, all of these, by the way, we must have added three more, because we're now at you.
I know, I noticed that. I noticed that.
So there's four, that's all we received out of, I don't know how many here, there's quite a few, so. And, and again, it's going to take time before people get used to it and knowing that we were requesting it. So perhaps each one of your committees at the end of the meeting, just remind the recording secretary. Okay? Council LeBranche, you have strange eyes over there.
No, I'm just looking at the recording secretary for the Budget Committee.
Oh. The planning board.
And the planning board, and the council.
You got all this?
All right. Now, any old business?
Yes.
Lights, camera? And you have been beaten by Councilor LeBranche.
Old business. Back on our last meeting, which was, what, June 25th? Under old business, at that point, it was noted that we had to take care of the rules of procedure for the council. And it was supposed to be on this agenda, and it wasn't. Can we make sure it's on the next agenda?
Yes, yes. And that's my fault, because I didn't take it out to give it to the administrator to put in the wording and the verbiage in there. So I apologize for that. It's not his fault as much.
Okay.
I relieved you on that one.
Oh, Councilor Quox?
Mine is basically new business, so.
All right. Your overrule. Councilor Bergeron?
I've been away, so perhaps I, you know, missed this, but the Durham School issue, has that been scheduled?
I've put several calls in and have yet to receive a phone call back on it. I called just before, late this afternoon to...
I reminded him yesterday.
Yeah. And I made a call to Todd, and he got back, because we were talking about also trying to see if he had made a proposal for us to have each other's building inspectors slash health officers be, be alternates in their respective communities. And we were, we haven't, we haven't, you know, we both agree on doing that, we just haven't talked about it.
Okay, thank you.
There was another light that lit on. Who was it? Oh, it was yours, but new business. Any other old business?
Yep.
Your light's not on.
I know. All right. I gave to each of the councilors a sort of a, well, it's not sort of, it's a picture of what the new electronic sign will look like on the front of the Town Hall.
It'll fit in between, too.
It's going to fit in between, and so they did a small markup of what it's going to look like, and I, it's not as bad as, I think it's not as tough, so.
What was that? We'll see?
You're right, we'll see.
We'll see.
They'll be the first words on it. We'll see.
No other old business? Thank you for providing that, by the way. That was really helpful, actually. All right, new business? Councilor Quox?
I, it's, this is part of old business, new business. Do you have the revenues that we receive from the, the town transfer station on scrap metal?
I'd have to get that from...
Okay, because I know, I remember Rick Malaski talking once, and he said that it's not the whole plow, it's just those little tips of the plows that they use, and it's all metal, and when they, it's attached, there's something attached, and they wear out quite easily, and they recycle those. And I, I know there's a lot of scrap metal down there, and everything's going through the roof. It could be a very good generator of income. And I was wondering what we got on that. And then also, I had mentioned at one meeting regarding cash-only accepted at the dump. And there are not any cash-only accepted signs at the perimeter, so someone's pulling in.
Check only.
Before they get in, it should be check...
It's check only, isn't it?
Check only. No cash accepted. Check only.
She's saying as you're coming in the gate, you don't see.
You have to get all the way in, and we thought that there was, but there isn't. And then I feel terrible, because I'm asking for everyone to hold the budget on money, but in light of what Newmarket has been going through and so forth, and you know the work that Mr. Richard Alburn's been doing on the Cheswell Cemetery? We've got a state historic marker, he's gotten awards constantly, and he has been invited[1670.01] to speak to the Association of African-American Museums in August. And he has put an extensive amount of time and money into what he's done, and it is in such a positive attitude for Newmarket. It's put us in a different light, I think, with the accomplishments that he's done down there. And the cost, he's asked to go to Chicago as a speaker. Between August 27th and August 30th, he will be speaking. Along with the presenters for that day will be Jerry M. Bogus from the University of New Hampshire, Valerie Cunningham from the University of New Hampshire, and Rich Alpern as an independent scholar, visiting New Hampshire's black heritage and making it visible. And he reported to us at our last meeting that they're trying to get the Washington Post to change their story to state that Cheswell was the first elected black official in the United States. And in light of that, I was wondering, and we've done it before, if we could help defer the cost of his trip to Chicago. We have done that with Council Hart. Remember, he went to some conference, and the council paid something out of the contingency fund to help him get there, and then he came back.
What was the conference?
I don't recollect what it was.
It might have been the trip they made to New York to look at a recycling system.
No, I think it was something other than that. But I was wondering what the boards take on that would be to give some money to him to attend that conference.
Any comments on that? My concern would be when Councilor Hart went, he was more than likely representing the council.
I don't, I can't recollect what it was.
Yeah, because I don't remember anybody else going, unless it was a specific purpose.
And we said that he would go, if he would come back and give us a report on it.
Right. I think, and I don't have a problem with him going, because I think it would certainly, you know, recognize the town, but I'm wondering if it's going to recognize more of him, because of his efforts and what he's done. It will have some reflection on the town, I understand that. However, I guess I would like to see some fundraising being done through perhaps the Main Street, the Business Association, the NCDC, and, you know, some of those entities. Because if we do this, it's going to set a precedent to other people coming and wanting to do the same. And that could lead to, you know, a situation we don't really want to be in.
Well, if someone else wants to put the time, effort, and money, and bring such positive recognition to the town of Newmarket, as Mr. Alpern did, I'd be happy to allocate money to them. But I feel it wouldn't set a precedent, because I'd like to see someone in this town do what he did. And I think it would be a disservice to him and his efforts and the recognition he's brought, the positive recognition he's brought to Newmarket, not to even consider any dollar amount.
So if somebody else does the same thing on another issue, and somebody else does the same thing on another issue...
I would be more than happy to support them if they did that amount of work, and put that amount of time and their own money, and brought such positive recognition to Newmarket, I most certainly would consider sponsoring a trip for them.
Just remember, you want to hold the line on the budget, though. Okay? You all set?
Yes, I am.
I mean, Mr. Wodowski? You had your light on.
Today, we, the department heads and I, met with Donetta Haley from the local government center to talk about the pay-in classification scale project. And one of the things with the project is to have a meeting with Donetta Haley and the council to talk, one of the things, about the communities, because we all came to a conclusion as to the communities that we would like to have used. I can tell you that it was a very spirited debate that we had, lasted the full hour and a half plus of our meeting, because we talked about a bunch of different issues in regards to the pay-in classification study. I'd like to propose that, if possible, if the council's in agreement, that the 30th of this month, 30th, which is Wednesday, if the council would be agreeable to meeting with Donetta Haley to go over the discussion that we all had, department heads would be here, and I think it'd be very good if we had that, so, because we want to move forward on this and have it completed, you know, probably at the latest by the end of December, actually in November. So we need to move forward, and we'd like to have that discussion. That's part of the contract, is to have the council meet with them and have that discussion, so.
When did you have this discussion?
Today.
Okay.
I'd like to reiterate what Council Quox said about possibly taking some money for the contingency fund to support Mr. Alpern. Mr. Alpern is going to be representing this town on a national basis, and can look at it from a little different light. As well as what with Cheswell being the first black American elected to public office, Newmarket, New Hampshire was the first town in the United States to elect black officials to public office. And I realize your apprehension about possibly setting a precedent, but I think this particular issue, and bringing national light in a positive sense on the town of Newmarket, is worth spending some money out of our contingency fund on.
Thank you. I want to go back to Administrator Wodowski's request of the classification and the meeting of August 30th. Does everybody...
No. July 30th.
July 30th? Okay. Write that wrong. Is everybody in agreement to that?
Absolutely.
Do you have any idea how long a meeting will be? Just, yucks. Could be very long.
I would say that we could keep it to an hour. I don't think it needs to go. I mean, as I said, I mean, the department heads discussed, you know, we knew what communities we wanted to put on the table, which are the same ones that were utilized in the last one. But we had a long discussion about the type of plan and proposal that would be the end result to provide for that, we pay for the future years, so.
Okay.
Okay.
I think it can realistically not last longer than, you know, an hour and a half, but I think we can keep it to an hour.
Evening meeting?
He's got an hour to...
Is it an evening meeting?
Evening meeting.
Yeah, seven o'clock.
Yeah, I'd be agreeable to meet at six o'clock.
Thirty.
But I understand different councilors have, you know, different pressures, so seven o'clock would be the best.
Six-thirty would be acceptable. I'm the one that usually has a problem with time. But six-thirty would be acceptable on that.
Is anybody in agreement to six-thirty? Okay? I'll set it up.
Great.
July 30. Six-thirty. We're going to hold him to the hour, hour and a half.
Yeah, we'll be out of here by eight o'clock at the latest. Not more than that.
Reflect that in the minutes, please.
It's the only item on the agenda. The only item on the agenda.
I want that reflected in the minutes, please. Okay. So we have that. We'll get that set up.
I have a question on that.
All right. Council Quox?
And how many towns...
Let's talk about that.
Yeah, get it all at once, instead of piecemealing it.
I have a question that refers to, I want to make sure I'm going to have the information.
Well, the question is to ask the council. I mean, we'll, you know, I'm not opposed, you know, the 2005 study that was done had eight towns that were utilized, and they were all seacoast area communities.
Right.
And that's because that's the geographic area that we deal with, with hiring individuals for the different towns. And I'll be more, I will send that to the council prior to the meeting. I don't have, I mean, it's not a big secret.
You mean the other study?
Yes.
Can I finish my question? Thank you. I'd like to know how many towns that you're discussing, the names of the towns, and I'd like the comparisons used in your choice of those towns. So we'd be able to read that and quantify those comparisons as to whether or not those towns should indeed be used for pay classification.
We're going to get that that night.
That's what I said I would do.
But we're going to get it that.
No.
If we get it that night, we don't have time to digest it.
No, no, no.
We'll get that well before that.
The Friday before.
Okay. Because it's usually up to the town council members to pick the towns that we want to utilize out of that list.
He's giving recommendation. He's not saying these are going to be specific, but he's getting recommendation, it's coming to us, right?
Right. We've selected eight towns that should be included in the study.
I think that's what you had originally asked, Council Quox, way back, was give us some towns, but don't go out to Boe or the other town.
Well, they have to...
More seacoast, because that's where the cost is, and everybody's living in the same area. So, yeah.
Because the town council, in the end, picks the towns that we want to use.
I would hope that it would be a collaborative effort.
Oh, yeah, yeah. But the council votes on the towns that we want to use.
So that's... July 30th, so that information will be available towards late Friday in their regular packet-type thing. Okay. So we can read about it and brush up on it. Okay. I have, oh, I'm sorry, does anybody else have anything before I speak here? I have a couple of items here. Could we, Council Quox brought up the dump, and it made me think about the dump and the road, once you get into the dump. Could we do some improvement on that? I mean, there's big potholes everywhere. I mean, I'm about ready to dump my trash in the pothole to fill it in. So that's a concern. And the other thing is, I want to make the council aware that the, and I don't mean to interfere here on what last night was, but the planning board had a discussion last night with Pat Sherman, who was a architectural design, and she actually did the work, designed the work, rather, for the mills for the NCDC a couple of years ago. And she has offered to come to the planning board, speak to them last night, and actually gave some very good recommendation, of which the planning board took seriously, to help us move forward with the M-1 district. And Mr. Wodowski and I introduced ourselves to her, we took her out the hallway, and asked if she, one of two things approached. One, would she be willing to come before the council and speak to the council on what some of her, some of the things she can do for the town in helping the town move forward with the mills in the M-1 district? Or another approach would be to have a conversation first and foremost, to get an idea where everybody was, and that would include the town administrator, the chairman of the council, the vice chair of the council, the chair of the planning board, and the vice chair, and I believe we added the town planner to that, just to get a dialogue going. And then she would be coming before the council, and my understanding, if I got this correct last night, she's willing to do this pro bono. So when the planning board does submit the zoning changes to the council, she would also be here to help, along with the planning board, some of the aspects of it, and how it all integrates and comes together, and she's...
We're trying to get that done the end of August.
On the end of August, right. And I had mentioned last night, back in my original planning with that calendar in the town hall, I had kind of put in there, in the middle of September, that we were hoping that we would get the ordinance from the planning board to look at and, you know, to do review. So, Council LaBranche?
I guess my thoughts are, if this individual is willing to do it for free, why have her come two or three times if we can do it all as a group in one hit?
It was her preference to have a separate meeting first. That was her preference. We gave her two options.
Separate meeting with...
The planning board chairman, and the vice chair, the chair of the council, and the vice chair of the council, the town administrator.
But last evening, she met with just the whole planning board as a group.
Right. That is true. But we're going based on her wishes. She's the one that's doing it pro bono. And then she said, after we had that dialogue, yes, she'd be willing to come and talk to the council, because she'd have a clearer direction from the planning board of what's happening, of what their thoughts are, as well from the town planner, as well, she'll be working also, I believe, with the NCDC, and get some direction from them also. It's not to make the council out of the loop. The council certainly is part of that loop, that she would prefer to have it this way first. We gave her two options. And Mr. Wodowski is working on setting up a date.
I guess it'd be my preference to do it as a group, but whatever the rest of the council decides would be fine with me.
Well, I'm looking at it this way, she's doing it pro bono, let's do it the way she wants to do it. We're not telling her how to do this. This is her recommendation. Any other discussions on that? I'm just informing the council to how, what, that she's willing to come and work with the community, and that's the big issue, that she's willing to work with us pro bono. She's actually doing the mill thing in Durham, the big project there, the...
The Mill Plaza, down there.
The Mill Plaza, yeah, yeah.
I tend to agree with Council LaBranche. It doesn't seem to logically make sense to do it that way.
Well, again, we're going the way she wants it.
To meet with the board, then the chairs, and then the other board, it just doesn't seem logical. But she obviously has her reasons.
We only had a few minutes out in the hallway, so, and we came in.
Last night, we were discussing, you know, rewriting this zoning, whatever it's going to be. And she was just, she gave some input into what she saw from her years of experience, so.
The logistics of the meeting...
But she's got to take that information. She got just, what's today, Wednesday, she got it, late Monday afternoon, when Diane Harding introduced herself and faxed her over the information. She looked at it on Tuesday, actually, she might have got it Tuesday. She looked at it the Tuesday, came to the meeting Tuesday night, and now she's digressing what it is the whole package is going to look like. And she's going to come in and offer what she thinks. And then, that's it, right there. Nobody's trying to hide anything. We're doing it the way, I figure, she's doing it pro bono, she's coming in to help the town, let's look at it the way she wants to do it. And if you're concerned that something's not going to come back to the council, there's certainly a lot of people there that will be there that would hear what's going on. That's all I have for new business. Councilor Quox?
I have these papers from April 5th that I'd like to pass out to the other members down there regarding what Mr. Alpern did and the award he got from the state, the Preservation Alliance. And it goes to say, "We want to congratulate you for the work that you've done and highlight your project statewide, with the hope that it'll inspire others." And at the same time, we'd also like to take a straw poll, or even have a motion made, that we move this to the next meeting to get a vote on this, as his trip is coming up at the end of August.
One minute. You have one? Yeah, I have one.
I'd like to get a straw poll, because if not, we would have to explore other avenues to raise the necessary funds to send him and his wife for this trip.
I'd like to make a motion that we put this on the next meeting's agenda to vote on.
Second.
And at that time, we'll have an actual figure?
I have an actual figure right now.
Which is?
He's not looking for all of it, but whatever he can do, I believe it's a total of $912.
That's all, for three days?
He's going there just for that one day. He has maps as how far he's going, and, I mean, he has done everything. That's airfare, that's hotels, it's...
Can we vote on the motion?
Is anybody seconding it?
I seconded.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Council Quox?
Aye.
Council Burgeon?
Aye.
Council LaBranche?
Aye.
Council Wodowski?
Aye.
Council Minutelli?
Aye.
Council Carr?
Aye.
Chairman Glennon?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Any other new business? Other than new councilors updating Emory and Garrett water situation, where are we with that? Requested at the main council workshop.
I had provided the councilors with a bunch of reading material. You can read it over the next few days.
You took it off vacation.
And expressed that I'd be willing to sit down, either individually or collectively, to go over all that material.
So it's in your court, if you have any questions?
I have to read it.
Yeah.
I've read most of it, but I, the next step, I think, is to determine, you know, are we going to have individual meetings or collective meetings with the town administrator?
Wouldn't it be easier to do it collectively?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I would suggest you do it. You can do it, because it's not a quorum, so it's three of you.
Right.
Yeah. I think I suggested that a long time ago, I mean, why don't you do it separately or together? It's not a quorum, you can do that. All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second.
Let Steve take a motion. Steve did.
Oh, I did. I did.
Yes.
Yes. I sure did.
All of us in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned?
We don't give a damn if somebody says nay.